The February 14, 2019 meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Bircham, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Maslin.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mayor Freiling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Here.
Mr. Zhang.
Here.
Before us, we have the council meeting minutes from the January 7 and January 10, 2019 meetings. Are there any additions or corrections?
Seeing that, I'll move to approve this. Mail.
Second.
Mr. Maslin, were you gonna?
Yeah, were those corrected? I'm good.
Okay. Did you catch that, Ms. Bircham?
Yes.
Okay, would you go ahead.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Today, we have one matter of special privilege. If Julie Ferris would join me at the podium, please. This is our quarterly award for excellence in service to Williamsburg, and the great thing about this award is that it is, the winner is decided upon, or the awardee is decided upon by fellow employees. It's really honoring of staff by their own, and I particularly enjoy giving this to Julie because I think she may be the only person on staff for whom I'm taller.
Take my shoes off.
And I'm gonna read this proclamation, and then I'll turn the microphone over to you. "The city of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Julie Ferris for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Julie Ferris has faithfully and honorably served the citizens of Williamsburg for 26 years. Julie began her career with the city in 1992 as an accounts payable technician. Throughout her service to the city, she has willingly accepted challenges, conducted thorough research in order to find solutions and to develop best practices, and held herself to a high degree of accountability. With this dedication, Julie earned the opportunity to serve as Williamsburg's purchasing agent. Although Julie's official title is purchasing agent, her responsibilities extend well beyond that of a typical local government purchasing agent. Julie also serves as accounts payable manager, payroll supervisor, risk manager, and finance director of the Housing Authority. In addition to those duties, Julie was instrumental in assisting with the city's financial software implementation and previously served as the liaison to the Williamsburg Area Arts Commission for 20 years. Although Julie's responsibilities keep her busy, she consistently demonstrates a positive attitude and is never too busy to assist others, always with a smile and pleasant disposition. Julie is hereby recognized for her dedication to excellence in keeping with the best tradition of public service in the city of Williamsburg dated February 14, 2019, and is signed by myself as the mayor and Mr. Trivet as the city manager on behalf of all city council and the entire city staff." Congratulations.
Thank you.
And in addition to this, we have a lovely plaque for you to hang on the wall, which may have company, because I believe you've received this award before.
Yes, I have. I just want to say thank you very much. It's truly an honor, and I work with great people here at the city of Williamsburg, and there's no other place that I would rather be than to be at the city of Williamsburg. Thank you.
We have two public hearings today, the first of which is an amendment of the zoning ordinance by adding Section 21-506.2 to allow the short-term rental of one room to transient visitors with an owner-occupied, single-family detached dwelling throughout the city with a special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Ms. Murphy?
Mayor Freiling and members of the city council, a public hearing was held at your January meeting on short-term rentals. After the public hearing and subsequent discussions, you instructed staff to amend proposed ordinance 1901A to allow the rental of one bedroom in an owner-occupied, single-family detached dwellings throughout the city, to limit the number of calendar days allowed each year to 104, to require the owner to physically be present at the property during any rental period, and to remove the whole house rental section from the revised ordinance. Before you today is proposed ordinance 1901B, which contains council's requested changes to the short-term rental ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of proposed ordinance 1901B, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Yeah, just a quick reminder for me and maybe some people in the audience. If we don't enact any ordinance, what happens?
I think it's probably best if Chris--
Short-term rentals are not permitted in the city, anywhere.
Would not be permitted.
Except for hotels that book pursuant to that platform and timeshares.
Gotcha. So there, so I think, what's the conflict that we have versus what the state is allowing?
The state code currently provides that localities have the ability to regulate short-term rentals within their jurisdiction, including creating a registry. We've suggested a special exception process, which really makes the registry not necessary.
I think maybe, Mr. Pons, what you're driving at is that when that change was made to the state statutes, there was a general expectations that communities all over the Commonwealth would take up the issue and decide what's best, and do so in a rational way.
And there's been--
Go ahead.
There's been, I guess, a focus and a close watch on how localities have been enacting these policies. In fact, there is a bill in the General Assembly right now targeting Fairfax County. Mr. Trivet, I don't know if you've had a chance to look through it, you know, the industry is continuously looking into how localities are doing, whether it's, you know, doing it too restrictively or too leniently. I guess they don't care if it's too leniently, but they just want to find that good balance, and that's something that we're striving to do, is, I think--
Right.
--the big question.
And so that was where I was heading, is that I think we're trying to find that balance, so. Those are the only questions I have, and I'll reserve.
Thank you, thank you, Carolyn, and to the city staff for the entire process, through the public hearings, the comp plan sessions, all of that, and I appreciate your gathering the input from residents throughout the city on this. I'm curious, what's different from long-term rentals, right? So you can do it, I have an L C with it, do year-round rentals with my housemates and students from the law school, but this one, what's interesting is that you have to get BZA, special exception, right?
Right. The difference between short-term rental and long-term rental, basically, we have a definition in the zoning ordinance which defines a visitor as anyone who's 30 days or less.
Right.
So if someone owns a home in a residential neighborhood and rents it longer than 30 days, that's not a short-term rental.
Right.
So short-term rentals are 30 days or less, and you have to meet the requirements that are in the proposed ordinance and get Board of Zoning Appeals approval as a special exception.
And the tools by which we can regulate these two different uses are very different, right?
That's correct.
So long-term rentals is, you know, basically enabled by state legislation that suggests that residential, it's a residential use. So we can't slap on BPO, which is business occupation, you know, licensing, professional licensing taxes, we can't commercially assess these properties, whereas for short-term rentals, we can actually regulate them as a commercial use. I was just curious, my one question is, can you walk me through how the BZA special exception process will be? So you have to get a hearing, and then how does the BZA determine whether they want to grant a special exception to a residence? Let's say a residence, an applicant has had a history of problems with this long-term rental, he wants to switch into a short-term rental, how do they take that into consideration?
Well, the first requirement is it has to be owner-occupied.
Right.
And there cannot be any other rental properties on the site.
Right.
So it has to be an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling.
Right.
The owner would then apply to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception. At that time, staff assigns it a case number, they pay the $300 application fee.
Right.
We put the green sign up in front of the yard that says there's a BZA application. We schedule it for the next available public hearing.
Right.
The applicant also has to submit the requirements that are in the ordinance. So you've got that list of, you've got to have insurance, you've got to have the smoke detectors, you've got to have the billing code, that whole list, so staff would look at that list.
Right.
And advise the Board of Zoning Appeals in a staff memo whether they meet those requirements or not.
Right.
And then the Board of Zoning Appeals looks at that information, looks at the management plan, looks at all that criteria, and then they hold a public hearing. At the public hearing, anyone can speak, just like a public hearing in front of city council.
Right.
Then they make a, they close the public hearing, and then they make a determination. If they happen to, say, turn down one, the applicant then also has response, can go to appeal that decision to circuit court. It does not come to city council, it goes to circuit court.
Understood. Thank you.
Senator.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thanks. So it seems like we've had two opposing, or different, proposed ordinances that have gone through a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission, and before that, a lot of public hearings and forums, and the main difference is whether we start this by allowing it in the entrance corridors or throughout all the neighborhoods that aren't otherwise restricted because of HOAs. What were the reasons why the Planning Commission rejected this proposed ordinance in favor the ones, the one for the entrance corridors?
Planning Commission has not seen this proposed ordinance.
It was part, no, it was part of the--
No.
It was, in that, in that Planning Commission meeting, they were both--
Ms. Shelton?
Planning Commission saw the original staff version, and they saw the version that they proposed, and this version is the original staff version with the modifications requested by city council.
Right.
So they considered whether to do it in the entrance corridors or throughout all the neighborhoods, and they chose to do it just in the entrance corridor. So what was the rationale for that?
I think if you look at the minutes, the basic thing they were looking at, they thought the entrance corridors was a good place to start, and it would be less disruptive to the neighborhoods, I think is basically their, their reason for starting in the entrance corridor, see how it works there, and then potentially expand it if necessary.
But I think you have, I think it's written out in their minutes exactly--
Right.
--what each member thought of the, the original ordinance and the proposed ordinance that they sent to city council being on the entrance corridors.
In terms of looking at the language of the proposed ordinance, the third paragraph is something like, I'm sort of surprised, it seems to have a lot of doom and gloom there, talking about the adverse effects possible with this ordinance and along short-term rentals through the neighborhoods. With that in mind, is there any consideration to putting a sunset provision on this that says, this is good for so many years, and at the end of that time, we're going to reevaluate to see whether we had unintended consequences or not?
This is not a use by right, this is a special exception. So if city council at some point wants to come back and look at the issue, they can certainly do that.
Right. My legislative fiat.
Another question was, in the lodging industry, we typically look at nights, we count nights, and the, I think the Commissioner of Revenue is going to be looking at the $2 charge per night. However, in the ordinance, we're talking about restricting it to, what, 104 days? Why do we switch from nights to days? Why do we want to count days in the ordinance and tax nights?
I think that's what council instructed staff was to look at 104 days at your last meeting. I don't think there's much difference between nights and days.
I think it would be fine to switch that from 104-room days to 104-room nights.
Yeah, because if it was nights, then you could almost figure every weekend.
That was the rationale.
If it's a two-night, whereas if you say days, it's going to cut that, you're not going to get every weekend. So I'm through with my questions.
Okay. Just to, I want to highlight something that Mr. Pons was speaking about, and that is that we've heard some feedback from residents that don't understand why we're doing anything with short-term rentals. They say, we like the community the way it is, don't allow them, don't change, just do what you're doing. And we fought very hard, and I don't mean me specifically, but Mr. Trivet and other folks were up in Richmond a great deal, working with the General Assembly on this issue. Senator Norman was a very strong proponent for the city of Williamsburg and other communities in this state to have the flexibility to create ordinances that they felt would be best for their community when the General Assembly was prepared to say we would have no authority, no say, in how short-term rentals were governed in our community. It would all be decided in Richmond, and it would be a one-size-fits-all. After a lot of effort, a lot of lobbying, the General Assembly agreed that maybe there's some value in letting each community decide what's best for that community. Along the way, they've made it clear that over restriction or no use is not governing short-term rentals, it's just trying to exclude them, and that is not what the General Assembly wants to see. So we've had other people say, well, you're just supposing that the General Assembly is going to do something to you, and that is not the case. We know from experience that the cities of Lexington and Virginia Beach tried to have overly restrictive short-term rental regulations, and the General Assembly stepped in and was about to take away all of their control over short-term rentals. Is that correct?
You can now add Fairfax County to that list.
There is a Senate Bill 1701 currently in the General Assembly. This bill prohibits Fairfax County from enforcing their zoning ordinance and restricts their ability to determine the appropriate number of nights and types of residences in which a short-term rental can be operated. So we're not fearing the boogeyman. What we're trying to do is find the right balance between what the General Assembly has clearly expressed to us, they expect for us to do, and our desire to keep control here within this community and make it work as best we can for everyone. So I don't have any questions. With that, we'll open the public hearing. And I just want to say, we did, we are having a second public hearing simply because we felt it was a little confusing last month when we had two different options on the table, so we wanted to narrow it to one and then have one public hearing for that. So I'd encourage anybody who'd like to speak on this issue, please come forward. If you could provide your name and address, and limit your remarks to five minutes, we would very much appreciate that. Mr. Scruggs? Welcome, sir.
Mayor Freiling, council members. Couple of observations. I very much respect the Dillon Rule. I am curious, the state code you just quoted, that is not code yet, that is in the Hopper?
It's in the Hopper, yes.
Thank you. I would certainly suggest council would not be considering this for lodging needs for our visitors. It's not needed for our visitors. Price point, it's going to be a lower price point in most cases. We've got plenty of lower price point properties that need business, so it's not for them. My assumption would be, part of what's driving this, obviously, is Airbnb, they want money in their pocket, but we certainly have homeowners that see opportunity for revenue to help pay the mortgage or whatever, and I respect and appreciate that. I suspect there's very few of those in relation to the number of homeowners we have in Williamsburg. In your packet, I assume in your packet, I pull that off the Internet, and I was particularly taken by, and I'm going to quote, the president of the Burns Lanes Residents Association, BLRA, the sole downtown neighborhood organization, and I'm jumping down, and he says, while all of the homeowner associations, the HOAs, in restricted city neighborhoods can and likely will opt out of any short-term rentals, and I can tell you, the woods where I live, we have done that, the historic and valuable downtown neighborhoods don't have that option. He goes on to say that he respects that y'all will look out for those neighborhoods, as I do, but I'm going to tell you, it's kind of a shame that the HOAs that were built more recently and had been advised legally, if you don't put something down on paper, this, these are the consequences, the older established neighborhoods, homeowners can't do that. And I also wanted to mention that the Comprehensive Plan Housing Survey that I guess you draw some of your conclusions from, with 545 participants, my guess is that's much less than 1% of the actual homeowners in Williamsburg, and I know somebody put a lot of work into this, but I would suggest in this instance, I would not put a whole lot of weight in this survey because I think that it really doesn't give you a good feel for what homeowners feel about this issue. I'm going to throw out a really crazy suggestion, and I know it's very late, late timing to do this, but one thing that council has done, and I assume is still on the books, neighborhoods that wanted underground wiring, council said, okay, we can't just underground everything, but if you can get together with your neighbors, and you have a certain percentage of your neighbors that will pay for this, the city, and I hope that I'm still right on this, I know it occurred in the past, it's just an opportunity to bring the neighborhood in. You know, on something like this, we have very defined neighborhoods. I understand the Dillon Rule, I've been there, I know how you have to deal with the Dillon Rule, but why not go to the defined neighborhoods and say to the neighborhoods, if this much of a percentage of you doesn't want this in your neighborhood, that's part of the code, it will not be. I think that's how Planning Commission tried to address it. They said you can have it, a lot more work there, they had communities all over the place, you could do it, you couldn't do it. So just a suggestion, I think that it's a shame that we have HOAs that protect, that allow things in some neighborhoods, and other neighborhoods are most established, are most historic, I would say many of our most valuable neighborhoods that are at greatest risk, their homeowners don't have a lot of option in this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scruggs. Yes, ma'am, please.
So first of all, I'm listening to this--
If you could provide your name--
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Sharon Dennis, and I live at 100 St. George's Boulevard in Williamsburg. So I'm listening to what he has to say, and I'm thinking, this sounds like the boogeymen, and we're all worried how this is going to impact on neighborhoods. And what I've seen is, well, number one, you're going to get taxes from all of these individuals. Am I clear on that one?
That's correct.
Well, that's only going to be a help. So I've had properties, and I have, in fact, I've been renovating one of them, and I have had a daycare center, and I've helped a load of families in the area, and I've helped children, and it goes on and on. I've given my properties to low-income rental, and what I've noticed was, you know, that my properties were getting deteriorated because we can't keep them up, because we don't get paid. So I've actually got an S U P on one of mine, that is a whole house, Airbnb, and so I actually have practice in it, and here's what I see. First of all, when it comes to Williamsburg, there's no wild and crazy people coming here. This is not that kind of place. It's actually a benefit to our community to have these in. Now, I get we have hotels and we have timeshares, but this is a different business model for which we cannot choose one over the other. This is a new business model, it's a little scary, but I think it's great. So what we're able to do is actually fix places up, yes, the economy, they say it's coming back, but honestly, there's a lot of people that still struggle. So with these short-term rentals, this is a little bit different than what I thought I was coming into. This is someone that can rent a room out of their house. Well, true, HOAs govern these kinds of conditions anyway, maybe some of them missed, you know, that particular item, but when people come to rent a room, you're not talking about five or 10 people, it sounds to me like maybe one, maybe two, a couple, or something like that, you don't even notice these people. They come, they go. They come, they pay, they stay, they play, they bring money into our community. This is a very viable, you know, kind of new business model that I don't think impacts poorly on the residents at all. In fact, I think because you're going to get added income, because people like this business model, because you're going to get people that are going to get this income that will enhance their homes, I know that's how it's working for me. If I weren't able to do what I'm doing right now, my properties would be in distress, both financially and physically. Because of this business model, I'm making the community beautiful, and the money I make may no longer go into providing, currently, but I may change this, I'm going to do a lot more work, it may not go directly in taking care of these single parents, low-income children, all that stuff, but the money I make, I help people. So when I make money, a lot of people benefit from it, and I can't say that for everyone else, but that's what I do. So I see the short-term rental industry as something we should embrace, not fear, keep track of it. Your HOAs that have already worried about it, and they have it in, that's going to take care of itself, but I think you might be pleasantly surprised to see that if we support this new business model, that it's going to be of great benefit to Williamsburg and the surrounding areas. I don't think it's a boogeyman. You know, this just isn't that kind of place. If I were in Miami and doing it, I can tell you right now, I've been doing it for over a year, the people come, they're so pleasant. I had a bachelor party, I thought surely they're going to make a mess. The guys actually cleaned up, took the garbage out, the place was great. You don't even notice them. So I just want to say here, I know you have to go through this process, but I would suggest to you that this is going to be very beneficial to our community, it's not a boogeyman, and, you know, please keep supporting it, because I think it's a good, it's a good business model. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Sorry I was late. I'm Virginia Payne, I own 308 South Boundary Street. I'm not an HOA, and I am not an HOA for a reason, because I do not want the restrictions from an HOA. However, I am a property owner in the city of Williamsburg, and I do feel that I am unfairly restricted in this avenue of short-term rentals because of where the location of my property is. There are allowances for people outside of certain areas, even allowances for people to own bed and breakfast on certain streets in the city of Williamsburg, unfortunately, Boundary is not one of them, so it's not an option for my property, and I am in favor of short-term rental. I think that the restriction of one room, although I can understand why that restriction is in place, or why it may be in place, I think that that is prohibitive, and I think it's going to be incredibly hard to track. As it is, there are certainly owners that do not follow the rules, there are certainly owners, if you go on Airbnb, HomeAway, and the other sites, you'll find that there's already people in the city of Williamsburg doing it, and there's no recourse for them. So I don't know how you're going to manage this issue, but I am in favor of short-term rentals in the city of Williamsburg.
Thank you, Ms. Payne.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, I'm Bob Follum at 708 Richmond Road. A couple of things. One is, it was my understanding, having read the documentation, that this proposal, if approved, whatever, would encompass the entire city as opposed to just the main access routes into the city, of which one of those I live on. So I'm a little confused on which way we're leaning on that as far as what's going forward for proposal or for approval. Things that concern me as a homeowner is, I guess, is the city staff resourced to, number one, has a city, do you have an estimate of, should this go forward, and it's a citywide ordinance, what the workload would be? How many folks would come forward requesting to go before the zoning commission, whatever, and get this approved for themselves to set this up? So I guess one question is, what's the anticipated workload per year? And then again, is the city staff and all the resource providers equipped, manned, and got the back, or the money and all that to support this? I haven't seen any documentation reference those issues so far. The other thing that concerns me is, unlike hotels, my neighbor, and I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know what they're, which way they're going, my neighbors on this issue, but my concern would be, you have the potential to have 104 strangers next door to you, you know, maximum, per year, have no idea what their background is, why they're there, et cetera, et cetera, other than the fact that they're spending a night next door. There's some issues with that, obviously, you know, what is their real intent in being here? I have no idea who they are, nor does the person renting the room really know their Unlike a hotel, it's got security on site, it's got cameras everywhere, parking lot, everything's lit up, yet they don't know who's, you know, really who's staying there, but yet they have some measures in place to provide security for the guests and for the staff. As a homeowner, I don't have that. I'm concerned about that. You know, on either side of me, this could be going on, and potentially 208 people, 208 strangers, over the course of a year. So I just throw-- So I just throw those out there. I ask for consideration on those issues before there's any final verdict on this. Thank you very much.
And we will do our best to answer your questions during our discussion.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address counsel on this issue? Seeing, oh, yes.
Let me just say about this security, because I know, because I've been doing this.
If you could address your comments to counsel, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. About to tell him. So they, when we do this, there's a security measure in place. It's probably as great as if someone just moved next door to you. You don't get a choice when your neighbor moves into you, or in the past, when I've rented two people. It's safer. It is safer, because let's just say they're not that nice. Well, they're not staying that long, and you can get rid of them. Nine times out of 10, 99 out of 100, they're going to be reasonable people. But if they're not, you've got a better shot at getting rid of them than you do if they're permanent. In addition to that, they have a security measure in place to all of these Airbnb, more so than with a hotel. So you've got, they're going to ask you for your ID, a government ID, they're going to ask you for a credit card, a banking statement, they're going to ask you your address, and so you're going to put a deposit down. And you go to a hotel, you don't need to put a $500 deposit. They'll take deposits. So you have more security on what's going on than I've seen, until I've seen otherwise. Do you have any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Seeing no one else come forward, I'll close the public hearing and come back to counsel. Before I pass along, Ms. Murphy, could we have benefit of your input here? The question about the corridor or the entire city, what we're looking at now applies to the entire city except for neighborhoods who have specific guidelines in their HOA that prohibit this, and that is part of the state legislation, correct?
We're looking at the entire city and single-family detached owner-occupied residential neighborhoods.
And again.
And not just the corridors.
If it's a neighborhood that has an HOA, state legislation, and they have something in their HOA covenants that prohibits this, the state legislation exempts them from it.
Well, that's one of the requirements in the ordinance. You'll see that as part of the application process, they have to give us written documentation from the HOA that it's either allowed or not allowed, and that's part of the application process.
But yes, the state code does provide that HOAs can restrict this use.
Right, okay. Can you speak just a little bit to the workload that this might put on your staff, and do we have adequate folks and what would be involved?
I think, looking back over the last couple of years, since this has really raised its head in the city that we've been looking at, we've had, in the neighborhood of 15 complaints, there were actual complaints in the city that we found valid. And so if you look at 15 or so of those, that's not an overburden on us. I look at this similar to what we did with the duplex ordinance that was adopted a couple of years ago. And we have, once you get through that initial group of people who need to apply for it, I think then the number that will come forth after that won't be as great as in the, as in the initial couple of years. So I expect, if this is approved, individuals who are waiting on this ordinance will come in in the next several months and apply to the Board of Zoning Appeals for it. And then after that, you might get a few here and there, but I don't think it's going to be such a burden on staff that we can't handle those extra cases.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Yeah, so, you know, this whole shared economy, this modern way of how people are beginning to spend their money, whether it's Uber, Airbnb, and the like, kind of is right at the center of a lot of pressure points that we have in the city. The, you know, just a couple of things that I think about are just property rights, property owners' rights to do what they would like with their property. And that's an important thing I think we ought to consider. You know, but on the other side, we have a lot of pressure in our neighborhoods, particularly around the college, from properties that are already used as income-producing properties via rentals. You know, so I think another pressure point is, you know, we do have an existing lodging industry. We do allow for bed and breakfast, and we do put bed and breakfast through what I believe to be some onerous regulations right now. And so all of those things need to be considered. And so when I think of this shared economy and what we're talking about today and allowing this process to happen, I think we're doing, I think we're coming up with a fair solution for those property owners who want to rent out a room in their house by going through BZI, by being owner-occupied, eliminating it to 104 room nights. Maybe that's too much, maybe it's too little, but I think we're finding a pretty good balance with, as the mayor talked about, some of the challenges we're seeing in other jurisdictions and having to defend themselves in law and in court. And I don't think that's something we really need to get into. The fact that we're going to allow this to, or one of the ordinance requires that we go through the BZI is going to allow for input from neighbors to come and participate in the discussion. Maybe it's, maybe it is a, maybe it's whatever it might be. But this gives the neighborhoods the opportunity to participate in that discussion. And so I think in terms of the sunset clause that Ms. Shelton, I think, spoke to that well, to say that, you know, this, by having to go through the BZI, we can limit the number or start to take it back if it becomes problematic. So we have those options moving forward. You know, and as I said last month, this, it's no different in my mind in terms of having another type of owner-occupied, owner-home-based business, where if you had a CPA, and then that CPA had three or four car trips a day. I mean, that puts pressure on neighborhoods. So I think where we're at with the proposed ordinance is where a good spot to be.
Thank you. I was just, I had two questions. First, Ms. Shelton, in terms of, so right now for long-term rentals, you know, just the traditional rental properties, residential use, can't really revoke that, right? That's a state-enabling statute, but for short-term rentals, for special exceptions, can you revoke special exceptions once it's granted?
Yes, and the statute the ordinance proposed provides the process for revoking a special exception when the property owner doesn't meet the required conditions of using the property as a special exception granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So arguably, it could be seen as another type of control, because whereas you can have a bad tenant in a long-term rental, you know, you can't really punish, let's say, the homeowner that's renting out that long-term property, but let's say you had a series of violations with a short-term rentals, you can actually revoke that special exception use if those complaints are valid.
Yes, it can be revoked.
Okay. I think that's also a big distinction between, you know, the discussion that we're having here and a lot of the different tools that we've used to actually craft the regulations for this ordinance, we couldn't do for residential long-term rentals.
Yeah.
So I think there's a little bit of apples and oranges in terms of what we're discussing, what we're trying to compare, you know, long-term rentals with these short-term rental policies. In terms, I did think that Susan did raise a really interesting point in terms of enforcement. So, Ms. Murphy, I saw from the language of the policy, owner occupancy, you know, has to be owner-occupied. I think there was a provision, correct me if I'm wrong, that there needs to be the owner present at the property at that time? Correct me if I'm wrong. But if that is the case, how do we enforce that?
It's going to be difficult for staff to really enforce that.
The fact that the owner has to be present.
That the owner is there for every night they rent their room.
And I'm assuming that we've got some, you know, vigilant neighbors that would be more than happy to report violations if the owner wasn't present, but.
Right.
Other than that, staff is going to have to continue having conversations once this policy is enacted to see how they.
That's right. If we got a complaint that the owner wasn't there, we would contact the owner and say, on such and such date, I've been informed by someone that you rented the property and you weren't there. So, I mean, that's basically what we have to do and rely on the homeowner to do the right thing and abide by the ordinance and the laws of.
Right, right. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. So in terms with long-term rentals, it's different, because it's owner-occupied, but it's not required to have the owner present there, which is why you have some folks that have multiple rental, long-term rental properties throughout the city, right?
Right. We have for rental properties, we have to cite the property owner on a regular basis if there are complaints, valid complaints.
Right.
And there's not something like this ordinance provides in a short-term rental that would allow staff to revoke the permit.
Right, thank you.
And that's similar to the duplex ordinance also.
Right, right. Thank you. Gathering some of my thoughts, you know, I hark back to the comprehensive plan for these single-family neighborhoods, where the language places a premium on making sure that we preserve and protect our single-family neighborhoods. But there also is a phrase, a clause, along with a particular sentence within that section that states that if it advances ideas of affordability, then, you know, we can consider that use. There's some vagueness in terms of how that's applied, and I think with short-term rentals, it certainly comes to play in terms of how flexible we're willing to explore that policy. I'm happy with how the language has been placed with the regulations. I think this is a good starting point as well. I know there's been some concerns when neighborhoods are not HOAs, but there are certainly a lot of different tools we have placed that I think will be protections, whether it's good enough protection and, or quality enough protections, I think will remain to be seen. But from a standpoint of just looking at the language and the policy, it seems to make sense. The fact that an applicant has to go through the BZI process, has to engage in a public hearing. If a person in my neighborhood on Goodwin Street, if I have a terrible reputation for my long-term rental, and I think an important distinction is you can't have a long-term rental and a short-term rental at the same time. So if I have a long-term rental residential property, if I wanted to do short-term Airbnb, I have to take my long-term rental house out of the rolls from there and place it into the short-term rentals, right?
Plus, a requirement is it has to be owner-occupied.
It has to be owner-occupied, which actually I satisfy, because I'm already, I'm also a tenant and landlord, but you have to be present anyway. So I think the owner has to be present. If I got a house and a reputation in my neighborhood for being a bad homeowner, my neighbors are going to come out and they're going to bark at the BZI board and say, please do not do this, because here's the evidence that we've seen over the years of this, you know, of the abuse of this property. I think that's certainly one type of control that is set in place. And whether the BZI board will listen is up to them, and we, I think we do a good job of pointing these folks standing on there. But not to put too much on the BZI, the owner must be present. I don't know how we're going to exactly enforce that. I think we have tried to the best of our ability to regulate long-term rentals as best we could, but this is still a little bit different, because we can still place some tools that otherwise wouldn't be available to us to be placed with the short-term rentals. It has to go through B-Pole, has to go through commercial assessment. I don't really see someone being able to run a business in the sense that we've seen with long-term rentals with short-term rentals. Again, with that owner must be present, you know, I can't see an owner simultaneously being present in eight different houses within the city, right? That's something I think city staff will certainly harp on. But I do see a value, even though I don't think it advances affordable housing per se, for younger families that we've heard from the last public hearing, some of them have come up and said, you know, by being able to do some sort of short-term rental policy, we're able to have a few more dollars to chip into our mortgage. I think that's a worthy cause, and right within the comprehensive plan language. And for that reason, I'm supportive of this policy.
Thank you.
Sorry, that's not brief. Mayor's looking at me like that.
Well, I'll take a few comments from both Vice Mayor Pons and Mr. Zhang, and sort of incorporate them into a few things that I have jotted down also. And one is that we are in a shared economy. It's, the internet is here, we can't get away from that, regardless of whether we like it or not, that this is here to stay. And I think we have to look at why short-term rentals have become so popular. It's not just the cost, I don't think, that drive people to this type of usage. I think it's the experience, I think it's the location, and I think it's, you know, the community sharing that a short-term rental often offers. And in fact, I was reading an article recently about a hotel chain that is trying to adapt some of the community sharing spaces that one often finds in a short-term rental so that it can offer what people are looking for as they travel, as opposed to try and to continue with the same model and practice that has been out there for a long time. As far as long-term rentals compared to short-term rentals, I think it's pretty evident that most people can make a lot more money with a long-term rental than a short-term rental. But this provides the opportunity for people in a neighborhood to add a little bit to their revenue. And I think one thing that we're forgetting is that not only are the people who are traveling using short-term rentals just like us, but these are our neighbors that might be offering this as a way to make their house a little bit more affordable. When I bought my first house, I borrowed money from my parents. I don't think I'm alone in that. And my mother created a little coupon book, and I had to pay her back each month. And the only way I was able to do that was by renting out a room in my house. And so I don't see this as a way to go to the bank and say, well, I project that I'm going to make so much money per month and get a better mortgage, but I do see it as a way that people who utilize relatives to help them buy a house be able to pay that back or to make improvements with their house. I also think that, you know, when we've talked about pressure in the historic neighborhoods, that pressure has come from investors who buy the houses and turn them into long-term rentals. There, I was at a meeting yesterday, and someone in one of those exact neighborhoods on Jamestown Road was commenting on the number of houses that are up for sale there and questioning who is going to be able to afford to buy those houses. And none of them would like them to go to long-term rentals. And so when I think about my few neighbors who are full-time residents on my street, they're people I know, they're my friends, they're ones that I have a picnic with, they're ones I talk to, there's ones that I have a relationship with. And if I want to do a short-term rental, or they want to do that, I would expect that there be some communication, and if there's any issues that result or that we have a conversation. I think that some of the people feeling that neighborhoods are going to be, all of a sudden become derelict, or there's going to be a negative impact, are forgetting that these are not long-term rental investors who are going to be doing this type of platform. But it's, as I say, it's your neighbors who will benefit by keeping their properties up more for a market-driven procedure like Airbnb. So with that, I support the ordinance as staff has developed it. Thank you.
I continue to support the ordinance as proposed by the Planning Commission.
Is that it? Okay. So I'm just going to steal what my colleagues have said and just put it into a little list. I totally agree with you that one of the biggest concerns for residents in these fragile neighborhoods that are close to the college is what they perceive as, residents perceive as a threat of homes near them being purchased by investors for long-term rental purposes. Because many times, the renters are great people, sometimes the renters aren't as attuned to the needs of their neighbors as others. But the bigger issue is the people living in the house do not have the investment in the house. And it's, whether it's a rental car, or a rental house, or a rental tuxedo, people tend not to take as great a care of something that they're leasing than they do that they own when they have to continually reinvest in it themselves. So this is nothing like that. We're talking about the ability to rent one room in a house for up to two adults, and if they have up to two people excluding minor children. Yes, there might be some bad behaviors, but even if there are, the people who do that renting then suffer the consequence on that rental platform that the person leasing the home to them can review them as a guest. And that creates a real limitation for them on renting properties in the future through those platforms, because anybody who's got black marks on their record is going to have a hard time convincing somebody that they want to have them in their house. The home has to be owner-occupied. The owner has to be present. I agree. It'll be a tough thing to enforce, but most people will comply with this because they won't want to lose the opportunity to do it. Because you have to jump through a lot of hoops to get this ability. And if you've gone through all that trouble, and you've had to pay B-Pole on the furnishings, or I guess it's business, personal property.
Yeah, personally.
Or, and you have to go through the BZI process, and you have to do the public I agree, it'll be a tough thing to enforce, but most people will comply with this because they won't want to lose the opportunity to do it. Because you have to jump through a lot of hoops to get this ability. And if you've gone through all that trouble, and you've had to pay B-Pole on the furnishings or, I guess it's business, personal property.
Yeah.
Or, and you have to go through the BZA process, and you have to do the public hearing. You're not just going to toss that away. So I think people are going to take this seriously. The limitation of 104 nights is two nights a week through the entire year. There's no ability for people to allow events in their home through this. So, and there's no whole-house rental. Right now, anybody in any neighborhood, unless it's exempted by the HOA, can rent one room in their house through long-term rental by right, with no oversight, no application, no review process. But they can't do both. You can't do long-term rental and short-term rental at the same time. Anybody in any neighborhood where it's not somehow excluded by the HOA, and I'm not sure to what degree they have this right, can rent their entire house to a long-term renter and not even be there for two months, six months, a year, five years. There's no control over that. And you add on top of all of this, the ability for the BZA to revoke the privilege that's been granted to the applicant if they don't comply with the rules, seems to me that we're putting a lot of protections in here. Can I guarantee that there will never be an issue with a single short-term rental in any house in this community? No. But I do know we have to do something. And after our conversations, I think we've come up with a nice compromise on trying to provide some flexibility and also satisfying what's expected of us by the General Assembly and still preserving our right to regulate these. We can change this down the road if it appears it isn't working. We can also look, if it works great, and there's never an issue and everybody's happy, it's also possible that we would consider, or some future council could consider whole-house rentals. I think that might be a little bit of a stretch for us because we, as Mr. Scruggs pointed out, we really have such a, we're blessed with a supply of hotel inventory right now that's available. So for all those reasons, I support this as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if council wants to change the language from...
Hundred and four days to a hundred and four nights?
Yes, it's in subsection C.
So I move to approve proposed ordinance 19-01B with the substitution of nights for days in subsection C.
Second.
Mr. Maslin?
Nay.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Motion passes. This takes us to our second public hearing today, which is PCR 19-001, request of Williamsburg James City County Public Schools for a special use permit to install a secondary temporary classroom trailer at Matthew Whaley School at 301 Scotland Street until July 2022. Ms. Burke, welcome.
Good afternoon. Williamsburg James City County Public Schools is requesting approval to place a second classroom trailer containing two additional classrooms at Matthew Whaley School at 301 Scotland Street through July of 2020. This is also the same expiration date as the existing classroom trailer. The application states that the current enrollment of the school is at 541 students. This is 51 students over the current capacity of 490 students. They note that beyond the date of July 2020, they'll need to review other alternatives. The history of the existing classroom trailer has been included in my staff memo. The applicant proposes the installation of the second classroom trailer containing the two classrooms to remain through July 2020. The proposed...
I'm sorry, is it 2020?
Or 2022?
2022, I'm sorry. The proposed classroom trailer is not adjacent to the existing trailer to allow for fire access to the rear of the school. That location was considered, but after speaking with the fire department, they chose a different location. Making this use, at the current capacity of 500, of, I'm sorry, at the current capacity of 51 students, this makes the second classroom trailer a necessity on the property. The property is currently adequately served by public services, such as streets and drainage. They've been in discussions with public works concerning some stormwater issues. The proposed project is in harmony with the adopted comprehensive plan and the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. The proposed use is in harmony with the character of the adjacent properties and will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of any features determined to be of significant ecological, scenic, or historic importance. This project is designed and cited so that it will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development or use of the adjacent properties or surrounding neighborhoods. The planning commission's held a public hearing on July 16, and other than the applicant, no one spoke at the hearing. The planning commission recommended to city council by a vote of seven to zero, approval of the special use permit to install the second classroom, temporary classroom trailer at Matthew Whaley Elementary School until July 2022. I'm available if you have any questions, and the applicant and the applicant's representative are also present.
Mr. Zhang?
I have no questions.
Mr. Maslin?
Just one question, in terms of the police department review, any issues in terms of how we go through a lockdown exercise with, you know, external cottages?
Well, that's certainly something we train for, and so I don't think that would have an impact on this issue.
Is there a fence around this, or is it standalone in the yard there?
The entire property is fenced, but the particular classroom trailer does not have a fence around the immediate premises.
But the property is?
The property is fenced. The property is, the fencing runs along Lafayette Street and then kind of along the backside of the residential units, and then there's the brick wall that separates it from the palace.
Okay, thank you.
And this would be like the one that's already there?
It's the, almost the exact same in color, makeup, material, and it's a little bit larger as far as size goes, but not very much.
Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing. If anybody would like to address counsel on this matter, if you'd please come forward. Seeing no one, come back to counsel for comment.
Yeah, well, so, you know, this is obviously not a desired classroom space, and I think everybody understands that, and particularly the school administration, the teachers at Matthew Whaley certainly know that. And as a member of the school liaison committee and been part of the discussion, we recognize that the elementary schools are overcrowded, and so that process of beginning to look at site selection and eventuality of having a new school is, it's on the horizon. There's no timeline for that. So in the meantime, I think that this is a reasonable solution.
I agree.
I would agree too. I was at Matthew Whaley last month, and they are bursting at the seams, so this will be a help with a temporary fix.
And it won't interfere with the garden out there, right?
No.
At his garden stays.
And Mr. Pons and I both had children who attended Matthew Whaley, and we've seen it in various levels of capacity, and it's a great school, but when it gets really crowded, it's tough. And they have, the school administration has done everything they can to find every available space to utilize for classrooms, but there comes a point when there simply is not enough within the building. And are trailers the ideal solution to anything? No, but in some ways they are a necessity because we cannot necessarily afford to build a new school as soon as any of our schools become overcrowded, nor can we necessarily redistrict. So trailers give us that buffer, that cushion area where we can still handle a little bit of growth while we develop the plan to finance, locate, and construct those new facilities which will eventually be coming down the road. I drive down Lafayette Street every day multiple times. I know Matthew Whaley very well, and I never notice that first trailer that's there. So I don't think the second one is going to be particularly noticeable, except of course for the students and the teachers who are impacted by this. But hopefully that overcrowding will be alleviated through other means in the near future. Do you have a motion here?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the special use permits recommended by planning commission.
Second.
Ms. Burgen?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Motion passes. This takes us to our reports, the first of which, monthly financial state. Mr. Trivitt, anything you'd like to highlight?
You know, the financial statement still looks very positive. It's interesting that our room taxes are still down in the reporting, the mills taxes are up a little bit. The 1% sales tax still reporting very high, and, you know, Ms. Dameron and I still remain concerned that some of that is a misreported amount to the city that we will at some point have to pay back. And I think we're finding some of that now through the diligent efforts of the Commissioner of Revenue, so thank you for that. That's all I have to report.
And just to emphasize, that increase in sales tax has nothing to do with the increased sales tax.
That's right.
That is just on the base sales tax we were collecting previously. Any questions? Monthly departmental operating reports, Mr. Trivitt?
Submitted for your review, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Sure, no questions. This is where we could get an update on the intersection at Ironbound and Long Hill?
I think we were going to do that under...
Oh, that's Temple, okay.
City manager reports, we have none?
None.
City attorney reports, we have none?
Correct.
We have unfinished business, none?
I think unfinished business...
This where you'd like to do that?
Yes.
Okay, well, Mr. Maslin, here we are. Mr. Clayton, do you have an update on the Ironbound Road, or Mr. Small, Ironbound Road intersection? Ironbound Road...
Aaron Small.
Welcome, Mr. Small.
Thank you, sir. I'm actually waiting for a text to come back from our inspector right now. They are switching over the power on the traffic signal right now, and they're hoping to have it back up in the next hour or so, and it should be operational this afternoon. So that's the current plan.
So just to clarify, that means it won't be flashing?
It will not be flashing. It'll actually be operating based on the loops that went into place.
So the normal green, yellow, red cycle?
That's right. Took a little longer to get to where we are right now than we had originally anticipated. As I said last month, it was going to be about three weeks. Took us a little closer to four, and that was because of some of the cold weather that it took, kind of limited how we could do some of the installation of the traffic loops. Pavement will be forthcoming again. We're trying to push, to try to squeeze it in, but we've got to have that temperature 50 degrees and rising, and be on their schedule anticipating for that asphalt.
Okay, questions? Mr. Maslin, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there another item?
You wanted us to address food trucks, just like...
Yes, yes, yes. If I can just give a little context here, I have, in the past couple of weeks, heard comments from food truck operators that concern me because they were under the impression that our food truck ordinance is not as it is. And so I was hoping we could get just an update on what the guidelines were. The one thing in particular that had been mentioned was one food truck operator was under the impression that they could only operate within the city limits twice a year. And obviously, that's not the case.
That's not the case. There are two types of permits for food trucks. One type is a permit that is issued by the city manager's office for food trucks located on city property or city rights of ways, which is done through a special event permit. The second type is a permit that is issued by the zoning administrator for approval on private property. This is the ordinance that was before council at your January meeting, and you approved. This expanded food trucks in the city from being only allowed in the B4 district, which was the Capitol, Land, and Road area, to being allowed in the LB1 and the B1, which are the downtown area, the B3, which is basically midtown, the ED and the ED2, which are Riverside and High Street, and one property in the museum support district adjacent to Great Hope's plantation based on the special exception, special use permit we granted. I would note that in the LB1 and the B1 districts, the regulations require food truck to be located more than 100 feet from a restaurant. This ordinance does not limit the number of days the food truck can be located in these zones. Food trucks are allowed only on developed and occupied property and only during the hours when the business is open for the business with written consent from the property owner. This ordinance also allows food trucks in all residential zoning districts for up to two times a year, so that may be the confusion. What is needed for a permit? Completion of a zoning application, a valid business license, a valid health department permit, an approved inspection from the Williamsburg Fire Department. It must be inspected annually and each day of operation in the city. A valid driver's license for each person who drives the food truck, the $50 application fee, and the applicant needs to provide current registration for the food truck, proof of current motor vehicle inspection, and proof of valid motor vehicle insurance for the food truck. If approved, the administrative permit is good for one year and may be renewed upon written request by the operator. The zoning administrator can also allow a food truck to remain on the site for multiple-day events or for closings on a case-by-case basis. These are, there are also regulations in the ordinance that talk about lighting for the food truck, trash removal, menu boards, et cetera, as outlined in the ordinance. There is also a provision in the ordinance for revoking the permit by the zoning administrator at any time for failure of the permit holder to comply with the requirements of the ordinance with written notice to the food truck operator, which is also appealable to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So I think that's basically a quick overview of the food truck regulations.
And if anyone had specific questions on this, please contact me. Thank you, Ms. Maslin.
Additionally, Mr. Mayor, I ask our PIO, Ms. Hartman, to put together a mailer or an email of some kind that'll summarize that, and we can send it out to the known food trucks that often come into Williamsburg or in the region so that they can be aware.
And I think what's happened is people have put too much stock in what they read on social media, and there's some misinformation going around. So, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay, okay, that's, anything else for unfinished business?
No, sir.
Takes us to new business, presentation of the Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance Quarterly Tourism Report. With us today, we have Jeff Wassmer, the Chair of the Tourism Council. Welcome, Mr. Wassmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council, Mr. Trivitt, Mrs. Sheldon, appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I think there are slides somewhere, right? All right. Look at that, all right.
Have the power, Mr. Wassmer.
I serve on the York County Board of Supervisors and are elected official to the Williamsburg Tourism Council and been asked to be the chairman of that council, so it will be obvious why I'm giving the update, and hopefully this will be the only update that I give you as we are in the process of selecting our new executive director. Just a quick, brief history, I think you're all well aware of Senate Bill 942 that created the Williamsburg Tourism Council. As you look at the overall organization, there is the Greater Williamsburg Tourism Chamber and Tourism Alliance. Ms. Jean Zidler is here that chairs that board. It broke us into two groups. One is the Business Council and the other, the Tourism Council. The Business Council, think of that mainly as the chamber that services the members of the business community. Tourism Council, nine members established by state code. Sole thing is to promote overnight stays and promote the destination, so that's really our focus. While we're sister organizations with the Business Council, there are differences between the two. Obviously, no membership in the Tourism Council. The state code calls out nine positions on the Tourism Council. You can see them there, the organizations on the left, and the current folks filling the seats on the right, and also ex-official members. Ms. Zidler from the Alliance is also the Virginia Tourism Council. Actions to date, again, we are obviously formed by state code. We're in the process of transitional leadership, and a thing to keep in mind, I think is important, is that we have had an existing organization that we've taken and now created two other organizations. So processes, procedures, checking accounts, all of those kinds of things have had to be established. As you know, Karen Ridden left, not far after Bob Harris left, and so instead of appointing an interim interim, while we do the executive search, we've brought in Jody Puckett and some other folks to help us through this transition time until executive director's named. Vice Mayor Pons leads our search committee, and I can tell you that recently we did some interviews, and we are fast narrowing down on a selection. So I've been very impressed with the process that Doug has ran, and I think that we'll find a quality individual to lead our tourism agency soon. It took a while just to get the first check from the state, if you can imagine that. They wanted us to go on a reimbursement phase, which was not helpful, but at the end of December, we received our first check. The original budget for tourism was around $5 million. We approved immediately an $8.5 million to allow the staff to make marketing buys. As you know, 2019 is here, and we were a little bit late in getting just our marketing plan set. So that was another thing that we wanted to make sure happened, is that we continued the marketing, we couldn't stop it. So that has taken place. At our last meeting, we talked a little bit about a development fund, and I don't want to get too much in, but you're aware of the maintenance of effort funds, that all three municipalities are required to still pay. The small portion of that will help fund the chamber and the alliance, but the majority of that will come to the Tourism Council. In a vote of our last meeting, we decided to take the remainder of that and put in a development fund. What's that used for? We don't know. But we think that's a dialogue that three municipalities and the alliance and the council will have on what is missing in our community that we might be able to use those funds for. We also started a reserve. Another thing that's important is we wanted to do an economic study. As you know, in the past, we've reported numbers of hotel room nights and all of those kinds of things, but I think it's important, and I'll get to this in just a minute, you know, the taxpayers, this is their money, and we need to be able to show the impact that tourism is having on our local citizens. And so it's important that we understand what the baseline is. And so this economic study, we just awarded, we're in the process of awarding the contract, we selected the vendor, will do a very deep dive in what tourism means to these municipalities. You know, what... You know, what is the new school we have? What is the impact that tourism has on that? So that'll be a great thing. It'll be a resource, not only to our tourism industry, but also municipalities in understanding that. We're in the process of doing bylaws for all three of those organizations. The Alliance has theirs. We're close on ours. So just all of that procedural things are still processing. And I talked about the marketing already. Let me just give you a little money, a high view of that. Tourism income, the two-dollar tax, that means about two-point-one million dollars to the tourism side. I'm not talking about the money that goes to the city. The SB 942, we estimate that at twelve-point-six million a year. That's coming in a little bit higher than we projected. You know, we just had no idea of knowing how that was going to play out, but that's a little bit more than we expected. The maintenance of effort, we estimate at one-point-six. So total sixteen-point-two million dollars coming into tourism when it used to be five-and-a-half. So you can see it's a significant, bigger investment. Expenditures, I told you, we approved the eight-point-five million. We started the reserve. We started the development fund. It's about ten-point-five, so we have unallocated five-point-three million dollars estimated, obviously. We're working through the budget, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. So that you can see in these charts, probably harder to read than... It's a little hard read, but this is the transit tax. You know, one of the things, again, setting up processes, is just how we collect the data. So I see that we have through October, we're just starting to get some of those other numbers. Williamsburg is in blue. As you can see, in the few months of the transit taxes, again, is the dollar of the other, of the two-dollar tax. This is the half percent of 942. You can see, obviously, August was a big collection month. That was probably because July was low, and this was a brand-new tax that was set in, so cash registers and all of those things still needed to be programmed. So we'll see how that plays out as we go forward. Room nights, you can see, you know, the room nights there, obviously, coming off the summer. We'll, as we go through the economic study and as we mature in our processes, we'll be able to show you a little bit better year over year, a little bit more data that you can kind of compare where we are. This is what we'll be rolling out for 2019. It should be coming out soon. It's kind of expect, the fun expected. This was from our creative and our ad agencies, and there will be kind of a official rollout of that coming soon. The overall thing to promote, obviously, the history is our base, but what are the other things in our destination that we really need to share with the community? Do we want them to come here and spend a week and enjoy not just the history, but all the other wealth of destinations and things that this destination offers? Let me give you my elevator speech real quick, and this is kind of what we're talking about, is what is the Tourism Council do? Well, again, in my municipality, eighty percent of York County residents leave York County to go to work. What does that mean? We love to live where we live. We love to live there, and we love to play there. And I think that's kind of where we get in Williamsburg and some of the other destinations, too. So tourism is a way for us to strengthen our community. You know, a county tax is different than a city, and we've talked about parity of taxing for quite some time. This gives us an opportunity to make an investment in tourism. And so the Williamsburg Tourism Council exists to strengthen communities through tourism. And I feel very strongly that we need to feel that the taxpayers are given this money, and we need to get an ROI back to them, so that we can have the kind of schools and the police protection and fire and all those things that our citizens want. How are we going to do that? We're going to do it through increasing accessibility, affordability, awareness, and attractiveness. So under each four of those things, as we get a new executive director and we start to get some objectives, accessibility, what are the things that we could do? If you ask Colonial Williamsburg, if we could straighten out the airport, we won't get into that. That would be a great thing. If we could widen 64 all the way to Richmond, there's a twenty-nine-mile gap. Is that our responsibility as tourism? No, but it affects us. So what can we do to advocate for and join with other groups? You know, we need to increase our marketing. So as we, as the council, as we go through our next layer of strategic development, as we get an executive director on board, we're giving them a clean piece of paper to put the organization in place. How are we going to measure success? Overnight stays, revenue, and admissions. And so our goal is to set the objective for the new executive director, say, this is what we would like to see it increase. Now you help us figure out what the objectives are. We have some additional funds. We'll probably increase our marketing a little bit, but we've got to turn the needle. And so it's, again, our belief, and I hope you join us, that tourism is absolutely to strengthen our communities. So let me just say, in conclusion, a new organization, new processes, we're trying to respect the current organization. Our marketing continues. Our 29 plan is being exec-- is being executed. Search for the executive director underway, planning a spring tourism kind of get-together with all the community. Hopefully, that'll be a time we can introduce our new executive director. And then want to thank the City of Williamsburg. You know, we use your facility here for our meetings. We greatly appreciate that. But I think the other thing, as you talked, as I talked to Senator Norman, one of the things his objective was with this bill is to get the three municipalities to work together on tourism. And I think my perception is that's gone really well. You know, all of the CAOs, Mr. Trivett and the folks in James City County and our county administrator, to our county attorneys and city attorneys, to, you know, just this morning, we were reviewing financial processes, and your finance director, Ms. Damaran, was helping us go through that. So the cities and the municipalities really took the lead to set up this organization and put a framework, and the mayor was hand-in-hand with us doing that, that we put a framework together that then the Tourism Council can operate. Again, I think we have to be accountable because it's taxpayer dollars. I like the part that elected officials are involved, not because we're tourism experts, but I think we need to be accountable to the citizens. So with that is my report, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
So I don't have any questions, but I think, Mr. Wassmer, you've done a great job, and not only in the presentation, but through this whole process. Really appreciate that you've stepped up, you know, being a defense contractor to kind of take the lead in tourism.
Makes me the perfect choice.
Perfect choice. But in reality, I think you are, and you've done a great job in doing, implementing, I think, part of the strategy that you just enumerated, communicated about Senator Norman, bringing the community together, putting real life behind these tax dollars so that they're, serve a purpose for the greater community. And I just want to commend you for your efforts that you've put forward to date, and thank you for that. So I don't have any comments, but...
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wassmer, for bringing here today and presenting. Does, I join with Vice Mayor, does an excellent presentation, or at least personally, in my opinion. Given my short time here in the Commonwealth, my observation has been that localities have always been allergic, highly allergic to regional cooperation for some reason. There's a lot of different reasons why that's always been in the past few decades. But this has truly ushered in a new era of regional cooperation and collaboration. And I join you and the Vice Mayor's comments with that as well. I know there's been several upheaval through several months, and the news has reported this extensively, and there's been a lot of word of mouth, but there is a Business Council that is thriving. I just want to put a really quick pitch, that is functioning very well as a chamber. We're still doing events, and I encourage for folks that were a bit confused just to know that there is still a functioning chamber. It's the Business Council under the Alliance. Tourism Council is a different entity, but if you have not renewed your membership, please do so. We will, I think we thrive on both parts of having a strong chamber function, but also one that collaborates with the Tourism Council as well. So thank you, and looking forward to seeing the new executive director and the progress.
Me, too. You know, just to that point, just to add on, as you can imagine, any organization that goes through a change like this, the staff and the employee, it takes a toll on them. And so, you know, I would just like to say thank you to the staff that we have across the street because they've done a great job just keeping things going as we go through this transition.
I have no other comments, Day. I'd just say thank you for the presentation and the remarks. Very well done.
Yeah, thanks. I agree with my colleagues, and just to Benny's point, I did renew my individual membership.
Very good.
Does he get commission?
Mr. Wassmer, if I may as well, I have two questions, or comments, maybe. You mentioned the development fund, and that you don't know yet what you're going to do with the money, but you have a sense of what you're going to do with the money. There's just been no final decision made.
That's correct. And I, you know, that discussion came up, and obviously, what I think the economic study will point out, and I think, you know, there are other studies, too, is what are we missing here in Williamsburg? Is there something that would bring more tourists here and keep them here? And, you know, to answer that right now, I don't know. There's been talk of sports tourism. There's, you know, other things we're looking to really do. But so that was a really big debate during our last meeting, is, well, what are we going to do with it? And the consensus was, we need to do something, and so we'd like to set it aside, but the exact definition. And I think, you know, we'll see how well all three municipalities cooperate as we, you know, if we put some infrastructure in and where that goes.
And so the strong possibility is it could be infrastructure, which would then be complementing what we're doing through marketing and vice versa.
Absolutely.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank you and Mr. Pons and everybody else on the Tourism Council for all of your efforts, Terry Benes and everybody with the Business Council. And yes, please renew your membership. Mr. Zhang has applications available. And also Jean Zidler and the Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance for overseeing all of this process, working with both groups, and pulling everything together. It's a lot more complicated than it sounds, and we've got a lot of people really working together to accomplish some great things for this community. And in some ways, the pressure is on, because now we have the resources to do these things. We have to translate those resources into results that will pay dividends to the residents who are paying these taxes.
And we have the chance to succeed, and if we don't, we should give it back, so.
That's right. Well, thank you again, sir.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda today, Presentation on Old Town Medical and Dental Center.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. We've had a very busy year at Old Town, fifteen thousand seven-hundred-and-forty-five patient visits in our last fiscal year. And this current year, we're on pace to probably exceed sixteen thousand five-hundred. We're up to the point now where eighty percent of the patients coming to see us are uninsured. This is an increase of about three percent over the previous year. When we talk about insured patients, there's a little equivocation there. A small percentage of these patients are Medicaid and Medicare, and then we have patients who are insured, but they have deductibles of six thousand dollars or more and copays of seventy-five to a hundred dollars. So when they see us, they really aren't able to use their insurance. We see these patients on a sliding scale that starts at ten dollars. About half of the patients that are uninsured pay zero, and nobody is turned away for inability to pay. Seventy-seven percent of our visits are for medical care and twenty-three percent for dental care. We're also providing our patients with free prescription medications. We have a program called MAP, which gets brand-name medications mailed to us from the drug manufacturers. We were able to give out four thousand six-hundred-and-thirty-one prescriptions to eight-hundred-and-twenty-five patients. That's over six million dollars worth of brand-name medications. And this year, we started a new program, generic drug manufacturers, working with a group called RX Partners, were now able to provide free generic drugs to our patients. And we're currently, we've provided over two thousand prescriptions for these generic medications. You have to help me again. You just have the magic touch. Demographic of our patients, we have eight percent pediatric population, and we have about eight percent population over the age of sixty-five. We are not seeing a graying of the population in our clinic. As patients age out and get Medicare, they tend to start going to other sources. The overwhelming majority of our patients are the working poor ages nineteen to sixty-four. About more than two-thirds of our patients are female. Racial breakdown is shown there on the screen. And overall, for our entire clinic, forty-two percent of our patients are below the federal poverty level. Revenue trends that we see in our clinic is that, three years ago, sixty-two percent of our patients were uninsured. Then seventy-three percent last summer, and as I mentioned, eighty percent now. We have spoken to the Secretary of Health for this Commonwealth. We cannot explain why this trend is occurring. As I mentioned, our insured patients are people that just can't afford to use their insurance. And what's happening now, because of Medicaid expansion, is we're starting to have patients assigned to Medicaid managed care organizations. I don't know if you're aware of this, but if you get Medicaid, you only get it for about ninety days, at which time you're given the option to apply for which of the managed care organizations, there are six in the state you'd like to be a member of. If you don't make a choice, you are randomly assigned to one of the MCOs, which may or may not be near your home. In addition, you are randomly assigned a primary care provider, who may be a physician you've never seen, to be your primary care provider. Only that primary care provider can authorize lab tests or consults, and only that primary care provider's home base can bill the patient. Our patients have a great deal of difficulty understanding that, and we spend a lot of time helping them understand these rules. The net result of the trends that we're seeing is just the falling patient revenue. If you look at our total expenses, it costs us roughly a hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars to see every patient. The total revenue per patient is about twenty-five dollars and ninety cents. This is down from the past when it was thirty-two dollars a visit. So it shows a net loss of about a hundred-and-thirty-three dollars per visit for every patient that we see. The reason we're able to work with a market like that is we get very good support from the Williamsburg Health Foundation, from James City County, from York County, from, of course, the city of Williamsburg, from the Centerra Health System. We also get public support from donors and through special events, and we do have some patient revenues. Programs that we're now able to offer, we're now offering dental services forty hours a week. We have four part-time dentists, two part-time hygienists, and two full-time dental assistants. We also have nine volunteer dentists in the community who, for free, come and see patients at our clinic. We've begun to integrate oral health care into the management of our diabetic and our pregnant patients. There is some evidence that bad oral health disease is associated with premature labor. And if you're a diabetic patient and you have infected periodontal disease, it's almost impossible to get your diabetes under control. Our medical staff consists of five full-time nurse practitioners. We have two part-time physicians. One is an obstetrician. We run a very busy prenatal clinic. And we have a part-time psychiatrist. We also have eleven volunteer providers. These are physicians in the community that are seeing patients for free at our center, and we support them with seventeen folks. Our medical service is open forty-eight hours a week because we're open evenings on Tuesdays and Thursdays because over ninety percent of our patients work. We're also now offering walk-in appointments at any time of the day. Our patients have a lot of problems with transportation, and they also often work jobs where they're not sure what their hours will be until the previous day. So the ability to walk in when they're available is very helpful to them. Bottom part of this slide shows you some of the problems that we deal with. Seventy percent of our patients have chronic medical diseases. If you go to your family practitioner, a typical family practitioner has fifteen percent of his patients with chronic disease. We have seventy percent. And the diseases we're dealing with are exactly what you'd expect. Heart disease, hypertension, dyslipidemia, which is a fancy way of saying high cholesterol, and chronic pain. The other issue that's with our patients is between, somewhere between thirty-five and forty percent of our patients not only have a chronic disease condition, but they also have a behavioral health disorder. Hence the reason for us having the psychiatrist on staff. This makes management of these patients extremely difficult. In addition to primary medical and primary dental care, these are the other services we provide. Prenatal care, pediatrics, gynecology. You'll notice on the right side, we're giving out free eyeglasses. Some very kind ophthalmologists and optometrists, basically eye doctors, have helped us set up a very sophisticated eye lab in our office now. So we're able to give eye exams to our patients, and we're able to provide them with free glasses if they need them. And one of the things we're doing now is trying to reach out to some of the school systems, and if they identify children that are having problem in class because they can't see, we can now do eye exams on them and get them free glasses. We also have something called a medication literacy program. We work with the students from Hampton University School of Pharmacy. Some of our patients have a great deal of time understanding the medications they're taking. Our typical patient with chronic disease is taking three to five medications. And most of our patients with chronic disease have more than one. And the students will sit down with the patients after they've gone over their chart and spend an hour counseling them on how to take their medicines, when to take them, why they're on them. Then they put notes into our electronic health records so that when we see those patients, we can reinforce the same message. We've had a Head Start program now, where we're reaching out to schoolchildren and trying to provide the children who have no dentists free oral health exams. And we're hoping to expand that to where we're now going to be able to give fluoride applications to these children. And we just received a grant which is going to allow us to do blood lead level testing when we see these children. We're hoping that this program's going to be expanded out over the next six months. We've just had our machines arrive. What lies ahead for us? We're working very much to increase our patient education classes because medication literacy really is the key to understanding and treating your disease. We have recently brought on some health coaches. We've identified some patients who just really have a hard time controlling their diabetes. And we're now assigning health coaches to them to work with them, to help them get appointments, to bring medications to their house, to remind them of their appointments, and to help them with... to their house, to remind them of their appointments, and to help them with diet counseling. We have classes teaching people how to cook in a more healthy manner, and we also have a program where we take them shopping. We give them a twenty-five-dollar gift certificate, and we can try to explain to them the advantages of fresh over canned. And we can also try to explain to them what all those little numbers mean on the cans and what the significance of sodium is if you have high blood pressure. We are always looking for more medical and dental volunteers. We're also looking for more community volunteers to help us, help patients take advantage of Medicaid expansion. Thank you very much, and I'll answer any questions.
So, you know, really don't have any questions, but, you know, I think Old Town and everybody in the room would agree, Old Town Medical Center provides the community a great service, and it's hard to imagine where some of these patients would be were you not here to provide these services. You know, your last slide talks about education and coaching and helping folks learn how to eat better and take care of themselves, and I think that's a critical element to well-being and lessens the expense of the future, so you're not combating some of these chronic diseases. So I'm pleased to see that you're doing more of that.
That's about, you know, we always would like to have our clinic be focusing on preventive care, and that's exactly where that fits in. Unfortunately, with seventy percent of our patients already having a chronic disease, not only are we trying to do preventive care, but we're trying to maintain people at their current health level and have them contain to continue to function at their current level. So we spend a lot of time trying to maintain chronic diseases, which is very difficult. It's very challenging.
Thank you, Mr. Mann, for coming in, and I'm pleased that the city continues to support the initiative.
Thank you for letting me come.
Thank you, Dr. Mann, for being here and providing this presentation. Oh, we might have some questions.
Okay, go ahead.
I may not have, but my colleagues may. Just in the interest of full disclosure, I do serve as council liaison on the Old Town Medical Center Board of Directors. We've also been, the city has been extensively involved, you know, whether through providing generous grants to the organization, but we've also had some of our predecessors on city council who've actually served or now serve on our Board of Directors. Our most recent one being our former Vice Mayor, Scott Foster, and also our other predecessor, Judith Knudsen. But what Dr. Mann failed to mention was that we actually recently celebrated our 2050 anniversary, which started out with, correct me if I'm wrong, a bunch of volunteer nurses who came together, saw that there was a dearth, a need for prenatal quality, prenatal care in the area, and got together with local jurisdictions in a partnership in order to provide what was missing here in this jurisdiction. I would venture to say that we've been doing a pretty good job of filling that gap to this day.
You're exactly right. The hospital, twenty-five, twenty-six years ago, noticed prenatal patients showing up with no care.
Right.
And that spurred the entire decision to start it, and it was a community decision, local people deciding to take care of local people, that led to the establishment of Old Town.
Absolutely. Context matters. I have a quick question in terms, you talked about the nurse practitioners staff. You also have a psychiatrist on staff, so I have a, in terms of, we have, the city funds the colonial behavioral health, and I know their sole focus, I'm assuming, is on psychiatric care, right?
That's correct.
If that's a good, a layperson's way of putting it, I'm sure it's a lot more complex and formal than that. So are you seeing, like, overlap patients with colonial behavioral health, or are they just completely too distinct?
Last year, again, we're talking about over five thousand patients. Last year, we had about eighty patients referred to colonial behavioral health, and about half of them made it there. There's a problem in terms of transportation and access, and also, we have a very, very liberal sliding scale policy where a lot of patients basically pay nothing, and colonial behavioral health has a much more strict sliding scale program. But we do have a psychiatrist available in our facility, and we do have a psychiatric caseworker in our facility, both of work, and all five of my nurse practitioners are able to handle behavioral health problems.
Gotcha. Thank you for that. And no further questions, but essentially, you know, given that we are predominantly services economy, this, something like Old Town Medical Center is a huge blessing for our community, and I'm glad I joined the Vice Mayor. I'm very glad and grateful that we continue to support a fantastic organization such as Old Town Medical Center. It's been, it's been absolute joy serving on their board. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for appointing me to that position as well. No further questions.
I don't have any questions or comments other than to thank you again for the presentation and also for filling the need for our community.
Thank you.
Thanks. So what's been the impact with Medicaid expansion on your staff requirements for both the additional paperwork and, as you said, educating the patients to fill out the paperwork for themselves?
We are being crushed by patients who are discovering that they are now insured, but they don't know what that means. And they also don't understand what managed care organizations are. So our people who, whose job it is is to provide free medications to patients are having to explain to these patients that now that they're insured, they can get their medications from the pharmacy. They don't like particularly because they're used to one-stop shopping. You come to Old Town and everything's there. They also are often coming to us not understanding how they could be assigned to an MCO that they can't reach, or why do they have a primary care doctor that they've never heard of. And so our counselors are spending time with them, trying to explain how to correct the situation. They can go through a process and be reassigned to Old Town. We are looking for community volunteers to help us with that because it is really a crushing patient load right now.
Thank you.
Dr. Mann, I'd just like to echo the thanks from my colleagues to you and the entire staff for all the wonderful work you do in this community, and also for carrying on the legacy of my former city council colleague Judy Knudsen, who is Executive Director of Old Town Medical Center.
That's correct.
For thirteen years. I know Judy felt is, though that center was very dear to her and at the center of what was great about the Williamsburg community, and we just appreciate you continuing that.
Thank you. And Judy, we did get her back on the board again, so she's, she's back in the saddle.
Did she know Benny was involved? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Our next agenda item is consideration of proposed Resolution 19-01, accepting newly completed streets at Quarter Path at Williamsburg as public streets. Mr. Small, welcome back.
Thank you, sir. Before you today is a consideration of two resolutions.
Can I just interrupt you for one second? I'm just, Mr. Maslin is stepping away as an employee of Riverside Health Systems, and so he's not going to participate in this discussion. So I just want to let the audience know that. Thank you, Mr. Maslin.
We've actually got two resolutions before you, the two agenda items. They're both related to our city's annual maintenance payments from VDOT. The first is to add and delete streets from the inventory that VDOT reimburses us from. New streets this year are all on the Quarter Path at Williamsburg Development, out near the Riverside Doctors' Hospital. The new roads are Prospect Street, a portion of Green Hill Street, Eastview Street, and Reed Out Road from the Roundabout at Battery Boulevard over across Tutter's Neck Creek. We are also removing a small portion from the inventory of Mount Vernon Avenue that was included, but the city doesn't own or maintain that section of the street. So we're correcting that clerical error. The second resolution is related to a 2014 revision to the Code of Virginia, Section 33.2319, that allows us to continue payments for lane mileage on those roads where vehicular lanes are converted to bicycle lanes. This applies to that road diet that we performed last spring on Second Street. The resolution is to allow for continued payments at the rate for four lanes on that street, even though we only have half the number of travel lanes for vehicular traffic. The new streets will add about eighteen thousand dollars per year at the fiscal FY19 rates to the maintenance payments that we receive from VDOT, while the Second Street will remain at approximately thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars per year at the FIS, FY19 rates. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And let's take these two separately. So if we can focus on the proposed Resolution 19-01 first, and then we'll let Mr. Maslin come back and join us for the second.
So I don't have any, well, maybe one question. So I'm trying to pull up the presentation here. And obviously, it makes sense that we're going to do this. Eventually, there'll be more roads coming forward that we'll bring into the system, will be asked to bring in the system.
That's correct.
Once they're constructed and...
Yeah, they need to be substantially constructed and meeting the city standards for road construction, which fall along the same lines as VDOT subdivision streets in this case.
Thank you. No other questions?
No further questions, but thank you, Mr. Small.
I have no questions. Thank you.
I don't have any questions either, so I'd be happy to take a motion.
I move that city council approve Resolution 19-01, accepting and deleting certain streets into the city's street system, and authorize the city manager to request maintenance funds from VDOT consistent with the staff recommendation.
Second.
Ms. Burcham?
Mr. Maslin?
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Now I'll come back to council for any questions or discussion of proposed Resolution 19-02, establishing the bike lanes.
No questions or questions?
No questions?
I move that city council approve Resolution 19-02, petitioning VDOT to accept the conversion of certain streets for continued street maintenance payments and authorize the city manager to request maintenance funds from VDOT consistent with the staff recommendations.
Second.
Ms. Burcham?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
It passes. That takes us to, oh, thank you, Mr. Small. Your presentations were so effective. Takes us to consideration of Resolution 19-03, to amend Resolution 17-12, establishing a special revenue fund and program policy for the Tourism Development Fund. Ms. DeWitt, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. This is a resolution, as you said, to amend the resolution from 2017, which first adopted the Tourism Development Fund prior to Senate Bill 942 being enacted by the General Assembly and becoming state law. So what this does is, three housekeeping items related to that. The first is, it removes reference to WADA, the Williamsburg Area Development and Marketing Committee, because now that's a tourism council and it's getting direct funding from the state, also removes the references to destination marketing, since that is now happening at the Tourism Council level. Secondly, it changes the timeline of the applications to the city for Tourism Development Fund projects. We've discussed this a handful of times, but it changes that to a March-through-October period to match when the state funds will become available, since they do lag by three months or so, as Mr. Wasmer mentioned. And then, thirdly, it adds two ex officio members to the review committee, one from the Economic Development Authority and one from the Planning Commission. Also, the Tourism Development Fund Review Committee met this morning for the first time, so I'm happy to go over a bit of that, but I wondered if you maybe do this?
Do this, and then we'd love to hear questions.
No questions, seem, to match what we need, how we're operating, so.
No questions. Thank you, Ms. DeWitt.
No questions either.
Nothing. And these are all items we've previously discussed. It's a change, or how the process has evolved since it was originally envisioned, and we've learned a lot of things along the way, and this is just putting those changes into the ordinance, tracked.
And it's fair to say that there may be more before we're through.
I'm pretty confident that is going to be the case. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 19-03, to amend the Resolution 17-12.
Second.
Ms. Burcham?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
And now we'd welcome your report.
Sure, happy to. So the Tourism Development Review Committee had its first organizational meeting this morning, where they appointed Chris Karachi as their chairman and Andrew Voss as their vice chairman. We went through the five, well, first of all, I wanted to, this is the Tourism Development Fund purpose, which you know all too well. This is straight from the policy that you just amended, and it's to increase patronage to our restaurants, attractions, hotels, and events in the city through financial assistance and reinvestment in tourism products, placemaking projects, special events, and public-private partnerships. And as you know, your policy goes through more detail about that. We talked to the Tourism Development Fund Review Committee. There's, if you break it out right now, and realizing this may evolve over time, there's five areas of work that they've been tasked with. The first is the Tourism Development Fund project grants. So this is the bulk of the funds that will be spent on projects and placemaking projects to enhance that patronage to our restaurants, hotels, and people bringing their, themselves and their treasure, as I like to say, their money into the city. So that's the bulk of their work, and they approved today the Phase One application, which is just the eligibility phase, which will be due March 29. The second phase applications will be invited by the review committee to come to a Phase Two, which will be due May 15. Secondly, there's outside agency requests that fall within the tourism realm, and so Tourism Development Review Committee is tasked this year with looking at those outside agency requests, developing performance metrics with those groups, and putting them under a performance agreements, much as the EDA has been doing and you yourself have been doing with your tourism contingency funds. So starting that process for fiscal year 20, so we'll have some objectives and metrics and an agreement with those organizations. Thirdly is special events. We realize this is an important part of remaining relevant and being an exciting tourism destination and just quality of life for everyone. So the tourism contingency grants that council approved, we see moving over to the Tourism Development Review Committee. And as you know, the EDA has also gotten involved with those grants through downtown vibrancy implementation. The EDA has metrics established in an application process and a performance agreement that's signed with each of those groups, and plans to continue that through June 30, starting July 1. That will move over to the Tourism Development Review Committee to handle those, those applications. Fourthly, this group needs to stay on top of tourism trends and who are tourists, visitor, what the visitor profile is, to inform which funds they grant, or which projects they grant. So I think Mr. Wasmer talked about this as well, but they need to be informed about what the demographic of, we have a great idea of who the demographic is who lives here, but who, in terms of who actually comes into the city, this is an area where this group needs to become expert and be armed with that material as they recruit projects and also as they evaluate projects. We also discussed that this type of information will be very helpful also to our existing businesses, who also increase the restaurant meals and room sales. So today, the Tourism Development Review Committee recommended that the city manager approve using some of the administration funds to hire Buckstein Analytics to bring us that visitor profile, and very excited about what that can do for us. And then, lastly, is the hard, really hard one, and that's measuring results. I've mentioned that, I think, through all the others, but this will be very important for the review committee to track performance of all the projects and grants, to keep you, city council, up to date on that. Of course, they'll be making recommendations to you throughout the year, but also to keep the public informed about that. So not only why are we granting certain projects, funds, but then how do those, those projects perform over time. I did want to mention one other administrative item that happened today, that the Tourism Development Review Committee recommended using some of the administrative funds to purchase a vehicle for the new staff and the new office that's created under this fund, so that that staff person can visit sites and visit, recruit prospects to, to come in for the grant applications. And also, once construction starts, they'll need to be visiting those sites and monitoring that over time. So that was a recommendation they also made.
Thank you, Ms. DeWitt. And if you could indulge me for just a moment, I'm not sure everybody still completely understands what's the Tourism Council's relationship to the Tourism Development Fund. So if I could just take a moment and explain that. Senate Bill 942, which created the Tourism Council, was a one percent increase in sales tax in Williamsburg, James City County, and York County. Half of that money that's collected, that additional one percent, goes to the Tourism Council for the Tourism Council to promote marketing of the destination. The other half of that money was returned to each locality where that money was collected. We're all free to do whatever we'd like with that money. The city has dedicated its half of that one percent to create this Tourism Development Fund, which, to complement what the Tourism Council is doing, will promote the creation of tourism infrastructure within the city, to further, better- within the city, to further better position the city for increased visitation and to create a greater draw for the residents. So there's a direct correlation, or there's... It's the same legislation that created the Tourism Council that allows this money to be invested in tourism product, but the Tourism Council does not have anything to do with the Tourism Development Fund grant reviews. That's done by this committee. This committee will then make recommendations to City Council, and we will make the final approval on those funds that are expended as part of that fund. The other piece of that is the Development Fund within the Tourism Council, which is money that the three jurisdictions were already providing to tourism marketing prior to the creation of Senate Bill 942. That money's being put into a tourism product development fund within the Tourism Council so that we can also look at regional projects in addition to what the city does with the Tourism Development Fund. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's great. And one thing, I think a good way of looking at it is how your Arts Commission has worked for many, many years. There's a set amount of funds, and they make recommendations to City Council about how those funds are issued to grants to nonprofit arts commissions. So they present to you, they present to the city manager for his draft budget, and then they come present to you during the budget process. It's very similar. This is separated from the city budget cycle because of the way the state funds us, but very similar in terms of being a recommending body to how those funds are used.
But there will be a component that matches the city's budget. If you look at the five pieces here, the TDF grant project, the TDF project grants are the only piece of this that operates, well, that and special events, that operate outside of the city budget process. So the outside-agency requests will function just like the Arts Commission does now, in that there's a list that they'll consider, and they'll provide a recommendation for allocation in the budget.
So just a little clarity, I think, on how you describe it. The city had created a tourism fund before Senate Bill 942 was enacted, and so what we decided to do is use the half percent to fund our Tourism Development Fund. I think that's an important distinction, because we've been, we've had this conversation now for...
Two years?
Two years. And so to that, one of the things that really sticks out for me today is, in all of the conversations we've talked about, these funds were to be deployed for tourism product. We knew that there was an administration part of it, and we loftily said 10%. But it's always been communicated and understood, I think, by me and maybe some others on this body, that the balance of that over what required to hire the person would go back into the fund. So whatever the committee does is only to make... They're to receive applications and make recommendations. And so I'm a little alarmed that they would today make decisions to spend money or make a recommendation to the city manager. I don't think that follows the intent of this Tourism Development Fund. I'm willing to have that conversation, but today, I'm not willing to support them buying a car or making a recommendation to buy a car or commissioning a study. I think that should come as a recommendation to this body. So beyond that, if we need a car, I think the car should be something we attach to our CIP and put into that process. Because I think beyond that, is it going to be insured by Tourism Development Funds? Or is that going to fall under city expenses? I mean, are we co-mingle funds? These are some of the things that I'd like to know. So I'm a little alarmed that we went that far today without having brought that before this body.
Thank you, Ms. DeWitt, for your presentation. Just a quick question. Why couldn't the EDA fund the tourism trends? I know you said you executed a consultant contract with them. So, I mean, I know the EDA does economic development, business retention, all of that, but why not them instead of taking the money out of a tourism grant review committee?
Certainly is something the Economic Development Authority could do. Don't want to muddy the water too much in terms of you have one group. The Tourism Development Review Committee is going to be your expert on tourism and recommending to you about tourism. You have an Economic Development Authority that's dealing with recruiting specific businesses. The lines do get blurred, because the Economic Development Authority would be involved in recruiting a, we call it tourism, project or infrastructure, a new attraction. A new business that provided that element to us. Certainly, they would be involved. So that is a possibility.
Right.
I think one way to look at it is that even more so than the Economic Development Committee, the Tourism Development, and it used to be called Grant Fund Review Committee, emphasizing that they were really controlling the grant aspect of this money, not the administrative side of it, is an investment body. You know, they have a pool of funds that's over $1 million to invest in projects, make recommendations to City Council, who then invests, very similar to the EDA does. And so I think that the tourism trends piece of it is an excellent way for them to make sure that their investment is wise, that their recommendation is well-founded. Without that, they're left to take the recommendation or the findings of the applicants on face value. And that's difficult to do. I liken it to if you, at an investment board, if you went to a bank and said, "I've got this great idea. I'd like you to invest in it." The bank is already going to have a set of information that they know about the market to verify what you're telling them in terms of customers or people visiting the attraction or whatever it might be that you're proposing. And so I think not to arm the Tourism Development Grant Fund Review Committee with this information would be setting them up to make awards that we're trusting are going to succeed.
And there's no doubt about that. I think the issue at hand is not particularly contracting with the consultant, because I think, I agree with you. That is certainly a crucial component in order to make an objective assessment of successful product considerations. My thought, and obviously I'm not the EDA rep, another colleague is, from my understanding, Economic Development Authority is a broader organization that primarily does business retention and recruiting new businesses. But my understanding is the past precedent with the city is that they've funded studies throughout a variety of different sectors, whether it's private, you know, sector investment pooling, funding studies for business retention, an economic development strategic plan, et cetera. I, you know, in terms of my view, I would have thought that the review committee was more specialized and that the dollars at hand would be utilized only for the sole purpose of funding the applications, whatever successful applications would come through. You know, maybe that's something we could do later on. I'm not necessarily harping on that. I'm just curious, how much money did the committee spend today? What is the total?
Well, the committee didn't spend any money. They just recommended that the money be spent. But the tourism trend, the visitor profile and recruitment information is a $65,000 cost. And on state contract, the vehicle costs $28,000.
Why now? Because we haven't had applications come through. So why would you need a car now?
So, the, this is about starting an office and building the infrastructure for an office that didn't exist. So much in the same way, we had to find a computer for this new staff person and a phone, and there was not a vehicle available that this person will need to use.
Right.
This office, I should say.
And we don't have other cars that she could share?
The city as a whole has a very small pool of vehicles available. And at any given time, any number of the people sitting here or their staff have trouble finding a car. Over the last few weeks, with the addition of staff, it's been really hard for us to allocate a city vehicle for travel, not just within the city, but out of the city. And the difficulty is, as I sit down and review the budgets, one of the things that I was particularly hard on, as they will all agree, was the amount that we budget to reimburse for mileage. So if there's not a city vehicle available and a employee takes their own car, we are required to reimburse them for that mileage. And the expense of that is much greater over the whole than just providing a vehicle. And so the question is exactly what Mr. Pons said. Do you budget for that in the new office that's just been created that needs a vehicle? Or do you budget for that in the city's general fund, CIP, and make another vehicle available to the whole pool? And I think either one is acceptable, given that we have a 10% allowance for administrative costs in this fund, and we're currently at 1%, less than 2%. It seemed like a reasonable expense for this one-time cost to be charged there.
And I'm assuming if it had gone through this fund to purchase the vehicle, would it just be to the exclusive use of the TDF coordinator? Or is it for the entire economic development staff? So it's under the economic development?
Or does it fall into the whole pool for anybody?
Or that?
That one car would be available specifically to tourism effort, which would include Ms. DeWitt as the supervisor of that person. So it's a difficult question when you break it down to tourism staff versus economic development staff, because there's only three people in the office, and two of them have tourism responsibilities.
Right, right. But I appreciate, you know, your attempt at clarifying it. Well, Michelle is used to my hard questions, because I was the one lone council member of this body that had opposed this entire policy. And since then, I've come around to recognizing the importance of why this policy is needed and crucial for the city. That being said, because we are in uncharted territory, normally, you know, funds such as $28,000 for a car or $65,000 for, you know, it's small chump change in terms of the overall fund balance. It's not chump change in terms of taxpayers, but in the essence of the entire view across the entire budget, it is small. But I think it is problematic, because what we have to do now is try to define the contours of what we use this fund for. And I think there is a great urgency for product investment, and product investment requires a lot of money in order to do. It's not, you know, just like some sort of marketing dollars, which you can see a return investment. This is, you know, sometimes it's brick and mortar, some sort of product development. So I understand the need for that, and I appreciate your bringing up the issues today. I think it's a good conversation. But I would join the vice mayor and strictly define those contours for the purposes of grant review. I think it's important that we keep as many dollars as possible in that fund to make it work.
And just before I go too far, when we do a study, how does that relate to what may be happening at the Tourism Council? And in some of this, you know, the information that we would collect in this study would be beneficial to the Tourism Council, I would think. And would we be willing to share? And I hope we would.
Yes.
And so then, they've got a bigger pot of money that's maybe not as defined. Maybe that's a project that they should take on that transcends just the city boundaries, but, you know, James City County, York County. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
I just have a couple. Have we previously delineated what would be considered administrative costs of the Tourism Development Fund effort? It's obviously the salary of the person who's leading this effort. But beyond that, because obviously when we set aside up to, to your point, up to 10%, we don't have to spend 10% on this. We know the salary doesn't come anywhere near that. So there have to be other expenses that are anticipated. We haven't spelled those out.
Right.
That might be the place that we start with the next conversation.
So maybe a budget. You know, a proposed budget on how to spend various dollars and help us understand the need.
Right.
And then this body can maybe accept that budget. And then the Tourism Grant Review Committee, maybe they can adjust some of their, what we're going to ask of them to work within the confines of that budget. And I think, you know, to the point about special event funding, outside-agency requests, I think each of those should have, you know, a line, a revenue line that needs to have different parameters than the money that we put towards tourism product. And I, so I think if we can develop a budget and maybe a budget policy move forward, it would eliminate the surprise of buying a new car. Maybe we need a car, but it's a surprise.
Sure.
So I think to your point, Mr. Pons and Mr. Mayor, what we did last year was the budget that was approved included a breakdown of the administrative costs. And there is money budgeted for various things in the administrative side. I think what it sounds like I'm hearing is that normally, the administrative purchases, once the budget's approved, are left to the department head that administers that budget and to me, to make sure that we're following what's been awarded to that spending category. What we may want to talk about is, rather than trying to send a message to the Development Review Grant Committee, which we need to talk about, maybe going back to that name, clarify that they are really only looking at the money that they award, not the internal spending, is, since we're so far below the 10% cap, it sounds like what we really ought to be talking about is lowering that percentage that's available for administrative costs. Because I cannot foresee a scenario where even if we bought everything that we thought we absolutely needed, or wanted even, that we would come close to 10% of what's available in this fund. And that would probably alleviate a lot of the concern. I think in the first year, it's reasonable to expect we're going to need some things that we didn't anticipate. And the vehicle, one of those needs that we certainly didn't anticipate, not just in this department, but citywide. And then the tourism trends and visitors piece of it. The one thing that I would clarify there is we keep calling it a study, and it's not. And the only reason I want to make that point is because this is an annual thing that we're contracting for, that every quarter, we will get new data that is valid input on who's visiting Williamsburg right now and what our key markets should be, so that we can better define where we're awarding money. Totally agree that there's an application to the region. Michelle and I have advocated for that since I've been a city employee unsuccessfully. And we also agree that there's an application at the EDA side. Buxton made a similar presentation that they made today to the EDA. And so I don't know that it matters whether we fund it over there, we fund it over here. I do think that it's important that we get this data. It was a City Council GIO, in fact, to get this kind of information. The question of when and who was debated pretty thoroughly today at the committee meeting. And a comment was made by one of the members that I completely agreed with, and that is, the city of Williamsburg needs to be the leader in this, as we were in the beginning, to demonstrate the relevancy of this information to the decisions that are being made, not just inside the city, but regionally, on how to spend this money.
So I'm still asking my questions, I think. The $65,000 for the tourism trends visitor profile, that I will not call a study, The $65,000 for the tourism trends visitor profile, that I will not call a study, is that coming out of the administrative budget?
That was the intent, yes.
So it's still money spent. It still lessens what could go to product, but at least it's not coming out of the product side. But I think us having a better understanding of just how that, everything that's in that budget, I think would be helpful.
And I agree. But again, I think when we talked about the committee, the committee was a grant review committee. It wasn't a spending body. It wasn't like the Arts Commission. It was, today, it was my understanding, that they were going to begin the process of identifying the procedures in which we would rate projects. How would we gauge whether it's something that's successful? What are the parameters in which we'll vet them? That was what, in my mind, we were doing today, not some of these other things. And so we don't have to do it today, but I'd love to know what the grant review process is, and what are they looking for? How are they going to review these applications and determine whether they fit the criteria? What is the criteria that they've laid out?
Right. So Phase One application is ready, and that criteria is lifted right out of your policy, because that's the first glance at a project, whether to invite them back or not, do they meet the general eligibility? So that application is a short application, a two-page application, is ready in March. The Tourism Development Review Committee will dig into the Phase Two performance metrics, which is also the criteria that they'll evaluate the applications on. They talked about that due since placemaking and infrastructure projects are both in the City Council policy, they discussed a need to separate those, because those have very different ways of measuring and determining which to recommend funding for. So they'll spend their whole March meeting doing that. And then in April, they'll look at the Phase One applications and invite the ones to come back for the May deadline.
And again, part of what got us started on this whole tourism development project, funding project, was the need to grow revenue. So that has to be one of the criteria that an application has to meet. So how do we determine that? Room nights, meal receipts, sales tax receipts? And so have we worked those parameters in?
So those are asked for the Phase One application, estimates are asked for that. The Phase Two application, they're going to be asked for more detail about attendance and direct tax revenue to the city.
Remind me, I know it's an open meeting, but is there an opportunity for folks to opine on any of this review? I would assume not.
There was not a public comment.
Okay. I would encourage our overnight visitation industry, mainly the hotel industry, to hopefully find a way to get involved with the process, seeing that how the other successful models from other jurisdictions such as Greenville, Asheville, Virginia Beach, they're stacked with overnight visitation industry members. I just was curious, as long as they have a presence, I'm sure they'll be able to have individual conversations, but not necessarily be able to opine openly.
I would recommend it, as there is a planning commission, a public comment period. I think that's important.
And we did have public in attendance, the press was there as well.
I'd like to add, examples of eligible products would be funding requests referred to this committee by council. In other words, at a point, we may decide that we don't want to fund certain things from the general fund, and we want it to be applied through this committee.
That's been my understanding all along, unless I hear differently, that there is the opportunity for the city in the EDA is actually spelled out in your policy as well.
Okay.
There actually is a project in the GIOs that was referred to this, and that's the lighted field, Fourth Lighted Field at Coonus Park. If that's the kind of project you had in mind, Mr. Maslin.
And funding requests, on an annual basis.
So long as they're tied to tourism product.
Same criteria.
And the council would determine that at that time.
The city would fill out an application, just like any other applicant, and it would be evaluated based upon its merits.
No, my point was directing somebody who's applying to the city for funding, through the general fund, that we may say, okay, we understand your request, make it through the tourist committee.
That's certainly possible.
Yeah, yeah.
And, yes.
You're saying that's doable now?
That's very doable, and certainly that happens just in the nature of our work every day. So when we're talking to a prospective project or developer, we're going to bring up all the opportunities for the city to assist if it's a project that meets those criteria. I did want to emphasize one thing, and Drew said this, the outside agency request here is not part of the 1% sales tax coming back from the state, the new state sales tax, that outside agency. Your question, Mr. Maslin, made me think of that, because there are outside agency requests that the city receives every year that are tourism related. And so we're asking this review committee to look at those and come up with performance metrics for them to assist council in those decisions.
And I fully support that. When we talk about the 10% for administration, that's not 10% of those funds, it's just 10% of what comes in on the half percent.
That's right.
One more question on that three, the new three, support projects and programs of Economic Development Authority for for-profit companies. Is there a reason we're saying for-profit companies? Why do we need to make that distinction?
That distinction is only made if it's an Economic Development Authority involvement. So this does not mean that's a requirement for every, so a nonprofit who may be running a facility that would enhance our tourism is eligible. This is just if they're working with Economic Development Authority, they need to be for-profit because they do the return on investment based on the tax revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whit. Takes us to our next item. We are getting closer to the end. Consideration of Ordinance 19-04, amending City Code, Section 1541, allowing encroachment on the right-of-way of Duke of Gloucester Street at Merchant Square for sidewalk cafes. Mr. Trivitt, I believe you're going to handle this?
I will, yes.
May I just ask Ms. Shelton, although this involves property that is Colonial Williamsburg property that's adjacent to the city right-of-way, the uses of this property that we're talking about would not necessarily be by the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, it would be by the individual business, some of which could be owned by Colonial Williamsburg.
Do you not have an application from the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation to do anything?
So as long as I disclose that I work for the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, there's no problem with me participating in this. Thank you. Mr. Trivitt?
Sure. That's Mr. Barham. I think there's a slide that shows the right-of-way along Duke of Gloucester Street. This is actually a pretty simple item. Okay. In your packet and available on the website is the map of Duke of Gloucester Street. The ordinance that's before you today is really very simple. All we're doing is amending an existing city code that allows for encroachment on the city's right-of-way along a certain section of Prince George Street for sidewalk cafes. And you can see that in place today, if you walk that section of the street. Some examples would be, I think there's two little tables in front of Houndstail, that's actually one that's using the ordinance. So it can be as simple as that, all the way to a larger space like a Romans might have, or I can't remember the name of the little.
Local?
Right, that's it. They have a little space out there. I think Retro's has some space, all using this ordinance to this effect. So essentially, anywhere that you would be in the city's right-of-way to do outdoor seating, you'd have to use this section of the city code. It's kind of interesting to me that we only allow it on that section of Prince George Street. So until now, we've not had anyone who's been interested in doing it on Duke of Gloucester Street in our right-of-way. And so if you look at the map that I provided, the right-of-way on Duke of Gloucester Street explains why there is outdoor seating at the Trellis, outdoor seating at the Dog Street Pub, outdoor seating at the Fat Canary and the Cheese Shop, and it's because it's outside of our right-of-way. In fact, if you look closely, you'll see that their seating goes right up to the right-of-way boundary line. So all we're doing with this ordinance is expanding the opportunity for that to occur to include the section to Duke of Gloucester Street, where our right-of-way might go right up to the door of the business in question. We do have one applicant that's coming forward, which is the reason that this is before you today. We wanted to make sure that we had the authority in the city code to consider their application. They've already been through a courtesy review, the ARB, which there's a requirement in the ordinance that the ARB review and approve officially. So they'll have to take that step and then be approved by the city manager's office for use of the right-of-way.
You know, no questions, but my comment would be, in my mind, giving up some of this right-of-way so long as it doesn't interfere with pedestrian flow that would cause harm or safety challenges is something that we ought to support. You know, that outdoor seating provides excitement and some livelihood. And when you look at the area in front of the Cheese Shop, Fat Canary, the Trellis, that outdoor seating, I think, brings vibrancy. And so if we can add some of that, and it happens to be in the right-of-way, and we can define that somehow, I think that we should support this.
I agree.
I agree.
So staying on questions, so we're looking at the diagram here, which I guess nobody else can see, right?
Well, we can still see, but the people at home cannot see.
Or in the audience. But there's, Proposed Ordinance talks about, this would start up to seven feet from the curb.
Right.
So if we envision a curb on Duke of Gloucester Street at Merchant Square, how many feet is left between that seven feet and the edge of the right-of-way that we're talking about?
You know, I measured it in the office, but I can't remember off the top of my head. The curb would be considered the edge of the brick and then the beginning of the street. So if you come back seven feet, I want to say it was 35 feet or something in that neighborhood. And of course, not all the buildings are on the same line, so it varies. And the business in question that the applicant is applying for, it was about 35 feet, I think.
What we're saying is we're going to draw a line from what would have been the curb for Duke of Gloucester Street, seven feet in.
That's right.
And that would be the furthest that this use could go.
That's right.
What about, and we know that Merchant Square has intensive special events, can we have a provision there that says, well, when we've got special events, like occasion for the arts, you can no longer be in the right-of-way? Those events are such magnitude that we don't want the right-of-way cluttered up with tables and chairs.
I think that we could, but I think that that would significantly decrease the viability of what's being asked for, because what's being proposed is a semi-permanent installation to make it nicer, instead of just temporary seating and temporary accommodation. So I wouldn't encourage you to do it that way. What I would suggest is that when we review the application, we try our best to make the seating area that gets approved work for the special events that we know that occur. But I think, too, that we would, as we approve special events, if there's defined seating, as there is at the Fat Canary, the Trellis, that the special events would have to work around it.
So and the defined seating that's there now is actually within their property line?
That's right, private property.
So one of the questions I asked staff was, if we're to give up property rights as a city, what's the value of those rights that we'd be giving up? And what would the assessor assess those at?
Okay, let me clarify, you are not giving up any property rights in allowing someone to put the tables on the right-of-way. You are just simply giving them permission to utilize the right-of-way. There is no deed of easement, there is no grant that in any way is recorded at the courthouse.
Well, that would be the same in an airport. There's no grant or deed. So if an airport has a concession being allowed in the airport, there's rights there that are being charged. So what did the assessor think that the value of this would be?
Well, the value of the land in question, Mr. Green estimated was around $35 a square foot.
What do we do, for example, on Second Street or other areas where we allow signs to encroach in the right-of-way? Is there any fee paid for that?
There is. I don't recall what it is, though. Let me check.
Okay, just curious. You still have more?
Ms. Murphy might know.
Everybody's looking, while you're looking. I do think it's, I like the idea, because I remember when this first came up about Prince George Street, there was some question about, yeah, is this going to make it harder for people to walk up and down the street? But it was after we had expanded the sidewalks with the money that was left over from the parking garage construction project, we put in the brick, widened the sidewalk, took some of the parking off the street, and it made it just more of a much more friendly pedestrian place and much more lively, to your point, Mr. Pons, because when you walk up and down the street and there are people dining outside, it draws people in. I think not only should we do this here, we ought to look at in the downtown area where else we're not doing it and where would it make sense that we should consider it and make that known, so in case it encourages a business to locate in that area that might want to take advantage of this. And I appreciate Mr. Maslin's point, and what I would say, the city would get two benefits from this. One, hopefully, certain, well, I shouldn't say certainly, I don't know, but hopefully would be increased tax revenue from the business that's selling food or beverage, because our meals tax is a very strong component of our budget, and if we can help stimulate that, all the better. The second thing we get is the benefit of a private entity investing in a livelier downtown that doesn't cost the city anything, but goes towards accomplishing our goal of increasing downtown vibrancy. And so to me, it's a win-win, but I take your point.
And I think, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Maslin. I think that is a good point, because businesses that have restaurants pay property tax on those. So another tax that we'll be collecting from this is people tax, because those sales will go right onto the records, and so every's office will have to collect it. So the only thing we're really missing is collection of personal property tax on that real estate. The chairs will all be taxed, so I think it's a small amount that we can not overlook, but I think we can make the determination that it's the investment that the owner of the adjoining property is going to make there, the revenue they're going to generate there is worth it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, there's no direct payment to the city, but the property owner is required to obtain a bond for the value of removing the sign when the permit from city council is at an end, or if they decide that they want to remove the sign to ensure that the sign is in fact removed.
And, Mr. Trivitt, when you say semi-permanent, you don't mean that anything is actually anchored into the pavement?
No, I mean, and all of this is yet to be determined, because they've got to go through the process. But in this particular case, they wanted to rope off the space. I think there's some lighting they wanted to do, and those would be the semi-permanent improvements. They could be removed, but obviously with effort.
Because my point was going to be, if there was something that could involve an expense to remove it, then a bond might be appropriate. But if it's something that can just be moved aside, then I don't think that's necessary. Any other comments, questions, discussion?
I move that the City Council approved Ordinance 19-04 is drafted.
Second.
Ms. Bircham?
Mr. Maslin?
Nay.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
And, Mr. Trivitt, could we also, at some point, it doesn't have to be today, doesn't have to be this month, doesn't have to be the next six months, but at some point, give some, look at the rest of the downtown area and generate some thought somewhere else this might be appropriate.
Absolutely.
The next item on our agenda is consideration of Resolution 19-04 authorizing allocation of the fiscal year 2018 school year-end spending plan totaling $194,070. Ms. Dameron?
Mayor and members of City Council, our current city-county school contract requires that any unexpendant local school funds at the end of the year revert back to the locality. And for year-ending fiscal 2018, the school had $3,54,000 in unexpendant funding. The city's share of that is $288,000 that we will be receiving back. The contract also allows for the school board to adopt a spending plan and request reappropriation of those funds, and the school board has done that. And you have before you a list of projects that they are requesting funding for. The projects total $2,510,000. The city's share of that is $194,070. And the James City County Board of Supervisors has approved the request for their portion in December.
And their portion is about $1.85 million?
The county's portion, yes, that's correct.
They did approve that?
They did.
I'm perfectly comfortable reappropriating these funds back to them.
Same.
SMI.
Agree.
I like this system that encourages the school system to look for ways they can save money operationally, and then they still get the benefit of those funds for using for capital purposes. I agree.
Yep, Ms. Mayor, I move that Resolution 19-04 be approved consistent with the staff recommendation.
Second.
Ms. Bircham?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
This takes us to our last item, which, well, not the last item for the day, last item under the section, which is appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move the council appoint Ken Gross to the Architectural Review Board for a term to end December 31, 2022, and appoint Michael Stevens to the Architectural Review Board to fulfill an unexpired term ending December 31, 2020. I further move the council appoint Barbara Ramsey and William Carr to the Eastern Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority. Acronym in there somewhere. And Andrew Trivitt and Michelle DeWitt as alternates to each with a term ending December 31, 2023, and appoint Carolyn Murphy to the Williamsburg Area Transit Authority Board of Directors with Aaron Burke as an alternate.
Second.
Ms. Bircham?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
This takes us to the open forum portion of our meeting. I do not have any speaker's cards, so I would encourage anybody who would like to address council to please come forward, state your name and address, and if you could limit your comments to five minutes, we would appreciate that. Welcome, Mr. Shelley.
Good afternoon, I am Gary Shelley. I live at 205 Indian Springs Road. As I wrap up my appearances regarding 110 Harrison Avenue, it is necessary that we acknowledge its causes and its consequences. On October 11 of 2012, shortly after council became the overseer of the redevelopment and housing authority, I spoke in open forum, suggesting, and I'm reading from our minutes, that as a first order of business, the council investigate what took place and council's part in it, what took place at 110 Harrison, unquote. Since such an investigation never occurred, I've taken the task upon myself. At the April 2008 City Council meeting, immediately after a FOIA request revealed for the first time the existence of the David Crane Bill contract for the purchase of 110 Harrison, I explicitly asked for accountability and transparency in the matter. I explicitly asked for accountability and transparency in the matter. It is clear now, the council purposely did not divulge to the public the existence of that contract. Although Mayor Zeiler thanked Mr. Crane Bill for his efforts, she gave no indication of what his involvement entailed. Over the course of the next eight years, I addressed the matter on numerous occasions, allowing ample opportunity for the city to respond. I stand by my thoroughly researched and documented statements regarding 110 Harrison Avenue. I've stated the city made no common sense attempt to safeguard public funds by requiring an appraisal of the property, in spite of what the city may have claimed. A FOIA request noted that no such appraisal has been able to be produced by the city. Minutes to a council retreat which took place five days prior to the council approval of the project were not provided to the public, in spite of the legal requirement to do so. Every one of you here today is aware of that requirement, as were the council members and our city attorney in 2006. Worse, when the missing minutes were called to the attention of the council, council offered no explanation as to why they had not provided them to the public. Council gave little notice to the public of its intent to approve the funds for the project. There was no mention of it at its March 4 retreat agenda. Likewise, there was no mention of it at its March 6 work session agenda. The March 9 council agenda noted only that there was a possible redevelopment and housing authority acquisition, with no indication that the city manager, Jack Toddle, had sent a memo to council regarding the transaction. But most importantly, the agenda neglected to note the address of the property, unlike RHA acquisitions on other agendas. The Harrison Avenue address would assuredly have attracted much attention and scrutiny. It came as no surprise that an unsuspecting public reacted immediately and vehemently. I'd like to read some more from that October 11, 2012 minutes, I quote, "Mr. Shelley said he has made numerous inquiries into the 110 Harrison Avenue fiasco, and he has been continually rebuffed and stonewalled. The debacle was indeed a nightmare, and was entirely of council's own doing. The fact that it was a financial catastrophe was no surprise, it was inevitable, but it would have been averted if council had sought the input of its citizens." Mr. Shelley said this is no ordinary misstep by our council. We and various students immediately, loudly, and forcefully objected. Of all the incidents involving town government relations over the past decade, none had a greater immediate reaction than the students' response to what took place at 110 Harrison Avenue." End of quote from our minutes. "The Harrison issue, the 110 Harrison issue was a direct result of the antipathy directed by some residents towards college students living in neighborhoods within walking distance of the college. These residents wish to segregate students from their neighborhoods and make residing in their neighborhoods as difficult as possible for students. These residents relied on council to exceed their wishes. Sadly, these attitudes still exist today. Misguided efforts by council, such as the 110 Harrison acquisition, diminish the potential of our city. I trust that all of you on our current council can recognize mistakes from the past and can move the city forward in a positive direction." And one final thought as I leave, I'm quoting verbatim once again from that same October 11, 2012 city council minutes, quote, "Mr. Shelley preface his comments by saying how grateful he is to live in a country where he can speak contentiously against his government officials without fear of consequence. How ironic. We must move forward, and we must do better." Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Would anybody else like to address council? Seeing no rush to the podium, do we have any closed session today?
No, sir.
Oh, it's almost disappointing.
Breaking a trend.
Mr. Mayor, can I move to adjourn?
You may.
Second.
Ms. Bircham?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?